Mic four check. Mic six check. Mic five check. Mic seven check. Mic eight check. Mic ten check. Mic eleven check. Mic twelve check. Staff one. Staff two. O D and mic. Clerk mic. Wireless one check.
Justing. Wireless one, wireless one.
...
Good morning. We are going to start the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting. This is for our nine o'clock agenda. Madam Clerk, we call the role, please.
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present and in person.
Okay, we'll go to additions or corrections by county council.
Thank you very much. Honorable Chair members of the board pursuant to Government Code Section 9495-4.2B, I will ask the board to add an urgency item to closed session, one matter of potential initiation of litigation pursuant to Section 9495-6.924.
And we'll add that as item 1F at the end of the agenda. Okay, do we need a motion?
Move addition.
Okay. Moved by Lopez, singing by Church for that add-on by county council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, motion carries five zero. Now, we'll go to the entire closed session agenda. These are items one through A through F. Is there any members of the public who'd like to comment on the closed session agenda? We don't have any members in the chambers, none online. We need a motion. Oh, no, we don't need a motion. We'll just go into closed session. All right, well, we'll recess the board supervisor meeting, then we will go into our Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency. Madam Clerk, you call the role.
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present and in person.
Any corrections or additions, county council?
None today.
All right, this is only one item on this closes session agenda. Do any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing nobody in chambers, nobody online, we will recess the board supervisor, and we'll reconvene at ten thirty. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Bienvenidos, muchas gracias. Tonight is a very important night, and we're happy that you're here with us.
Vamos a comenzar, damas y caballeros. Esto es una noche muy importante.
And we're gonna provide you with some very important information, and we're here with you one hundred percent.
Vamos a dar la información importante, y esperamos que lo comprendan todo.
And so, our first speaker tonight is the county administrative officer, Ms. Sonia De La Rosa.
Nuestra presentadora primera es la señora Sonia De La Rosa. Ella es la encargada del Condado de Monterrey.
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here with you again, to provide you with information about what will be the reopening to the community of Pajaro. It is possible that in the coming days, possibly by the end of the week, if not the beginning of the next, you will be able to return. The problem is that it will be for reentry, not necessarily to stay. The reason for this is that there are still significant cleanups to happen when you return to your homes. The cleaning will include removing mud, debris, or any material that had contact with the water. The people that are here with us today will talk about this information. There will be an opportunity to record what we're discussing today. So if you have a problem, if it's not coming in YouTube or in Facebook in the future, it will be available for you to listen or to provide it to family members who would like to have this information. So thank you all for being here, and we'll be moving quickly. We know that there's a lot of people that are standing, and we want the information to be provided quickly and then give you an opportunity also to ask questions if you have any. So thank you very much, and I will give it back to the mic to Nick so that we can start with the presentations.
Our next speaker tonight is Kelsey Scanlon from the Department of Emergency Management.
Nuestra siguiente presentadora es Kelsey del Departamento de Emergencias.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I represent the Monterey County Office of Emergency Services, now currently Department of Emergency Management, and we are responsible for managing and maintaining and operating the emergency operations center during times of crisis and disasters.
Nuestro departamento está encargado de cuidar al área del condado durante el tiempo de desastres o en caso de emergencias.
Ultimately, we are responsible for coordinating the reentry and repopulation of areas affected by disasters such as Pajaro.
Una de las actividades en las que estamos llevando actualmente es ayudar a las poblaciones de pájaros que vuelvan a reingresar a su comunidad.
There are several factors that we consider before allowing the community to reenter to make sure that it is as safe as possible for you to resume your lives and begin to recover from the disaster.
Hay diferentes pasos que debemos llevar a cabo para asegurarnos que la comunidad pueda regresar de una manera segura a sus hogares.
The reentry process is extremely complex and requires the cooperation and collaboration of several government agencies essentially to make sure that their responsibilities for repairing assets and services, and they're able to do that in an efficient manner before people are allowed to go back.
El proceso de reingreso es un proceso un poco complicado porque lleva cierta evaluación de los daños ocasionados y también evaluación sobre cómo se va a llevar a cabo el ingreso de una manera segura para toda la población.
Some of the factors that we consider multiple times a day in evaluating the safety of the disaster-affected area include levee repairs and safety of levee infrastructure.
Uno de los factores que estuvimos observando es la reparación del dique y mantener la seguridad del dique.
Windshield surveys assessing the overall impact to the community.
Otra actividad que se ha llevado a cabo es hacer una encuesta de los daños de las estructuras dañadas, y esto es a través de un etiquetado de los manubrios de los carros.
Residential and commercial damage assessments by the Building Services Department and the Environmental Health Bureau.
También se hizo una investigación de los daños a hogares y a negocios de acuerdo a los daños que se recibieron por la inundación.
My colleague at Environmental Health will address the different tags you might see on your doors as you enter home. Specifically, you'll see two types of tags, a red tag or a yellow tag.
Mi colega en un momento va a explicar un poco más sobre el etiquetado que usted puede encontrar cuando regrese a su hogar. Va a haber un etiquetado de color rojo o color amarillo.
These damage assessments are almost complete. We have about one more street left.
Nuestra evaluación de las entidades está casi terminada. Nos falta solamente un área.
PG&E has inspected the residential areas for gas leaks, and they have determined that there are no gas leaks in the community at this time.
La agencia de PG&E ha hecho una investigación para asegurarse que no hay fugas de gas, y hasta el momento no se ha detectado ninguna fuga.
Power is currently on in the community. If you return home and your power is not on, PG&E will be in the area to assist you at their community services van.
El servicio de luz está disponible en todo el área de la comunidad. En el caso dado de que usted regresara a su hogar y no tiene acceso a la electricidad, el departamento de PG&E estará ofreciendo ayuda y ayudándoles desde su camioneta que estará instalada en la comunidad.
We also look at road damages and impacts to the right-of-way, which Public Works has been actively conducting routine maintenance as well as cleaning of the massive amounts of mud and repairs to the road.
También se ha hecho una investigación y limpieza de los caminos y carreteras para que puedan tener circulación y se han reparado, se han limpiado todas las calles, se les ha quitado el lodo, y también se ha reparado cualquier hoyo causado por la inundación.
We assess the sewage line and the water system inspections. Those are still in progress at this point in time.
También se hizo un estudio al sistema de agua y al alcantarillado, y hasta el momento se sigue analizando este proceso.
When you return home, it's likely that the water will still be off.
Cuando usted regrese a casa, es muy probable que aún no tenga agua en su hogar.
As such, the county will be providing comfort and hygiene stations for areas where potable water and bathroom services are not currently available in the structures.
Por tal motivo, el condado continuará ofreciendo agua potable y baños portátiles en aquellas zonas donde no existe acceso al agua aún.
Finally, there will be nonprofit organizations as well as community-based organizations in Pajaro once the evacuation orders have been lifted to assist you in debris removal from your homes.
Finalmente, también habrá organizaciones no lucrativas que ayudarán con el proceso de limpieza una vez que ustedes hayan regresado, y esas organizaciones permanecerán en el área hasta que toda la zona de evacuación haya sido levantada y todas las personas hayan recibido ayuda para regresar a sus hogares.
In the coming days, when evacuation orders are lifted, we will notify you via alert Monterey County or NICSOL. Information will also be provided at the shelters and on our website, or you can call 211 for an update on evacuation orders.
Se le recomienda que se coloque llame constantemente al 211 o también esté comunicándose a través de las alertas que se mandan por NICSOL y por el Condado de Monterrey para saber cuándo la orden de evacuación se ha levantado. De esta manera, se informará también sobre cualquier otra actividad que esté afectando al área de pájaros.
Thank you so much for your time. It's been an honor to serve you.
Gracias por su tiempo. Ha sido un honor ayudarles y servirles.
Thank you, Kelsey. Does anybody have a seat open next to them? If you have a seat open, raise your hand. If anybody needs a chair, there's a seat over here. Maybe an elderly person, anybody who, there's a seat over here.
Si alguien necesita un asiento, hay un asiento libre aquí en esta parte de enfrente. Por favor, acerquese y tome asiento.
Our next presentation is from Marnie Flag from the Environmental Health Bureau for the County of Monterey Health Department.
La siguiente persona que presenta es la señora Marnie Flags de parte del Departamento de Salud del Condado de Monterrey.
Her presentation is a longer presentation, but it's very, very important information.
La información es...
My mistake. Fabieso. Okay, sorry. Cal Fire. I meant to introduce Cal Fire Captain George Nunes from Cal Fire, but chief.
Una disculpa. El presentador siguiente es el jefe de bomberos. George Nunes.
My name is George Nunes. I'm the unit chief for Cal Fire San Benito, Monterey Unit, and we requested the damage inspection team when it was determined that structures were damaged and destroyed the night of the tenth. Our damage inspection teams were able to integrate themselves in the emergency operations center planning section and use the evacuation orders to get an estimated count of structures affected. This set up our perimeter to work in. This information was acquired from the web-based app- This information was acquired from the web-based application that we use. Trained damage inspection personnel were deployed to the field to work in predetermined work areas as not to duplicate efforts.
Al inicio se hizo un equipo para revisar los daños causados en el área. Para poder determinar qué estructuras estaban dañadas, se llevó a cabo una asesoración y se aseguró el área en la que se iban a investigar primero. Qué zonas iban a investigar y el equipo empezó a ir lugar por lugar para revisar qué daños existían en las estructuras.
Quality control of the incoming data was done to ensure accuracy. The data collected creates web maps for the county, public, and final report. The damage inspection team provides information for the county to use as they see fit. The team does not release this information independently.
Esas investigaciones que se hacen a través de este estudio son exclusivamente para el uso del condado. Para poder hacer una información más, una decisión más informada sobre cómo llevar a cabo el proceso de, los siguientes procesos después de un daño en la comunidad.
The damage inspection data allows effective decision-making for operations, planning, and recovery. The damage inspection teams provides accurate and timely information to the county for approval and release to the public and officials and media. We provide supporting data for state and federal emergency declarations. And our damage inspections information collected allows the start of the recovery effort for the affected homeowners as quickly as possible. And in total, we inspected 903 damaged structures and 459 structures with no damage.
El equipo de inspección de daños hizo la investigación completa del área de pájaros. Esta información ha ayudado al Departamento del Condado de Emergencias para poder saber cuáles son los siguientes pasos para la comunidad. En los resultados de este estudio se observó que existen 903 estructuras con daños y 459 estructuras sin daños.
Thank you all very much, it's been an honor to serve you.
Gracias a todos, ha sido un gusto querer para ustedes. Quiero mencionar rápidamente, si no han visto este mapa, soliciten más información. Esto les va a ayudar a comprender el estado de la estructura en la que se encuentra su hogar.
And now Marnie Flag from Environmental Health.
Y ahora tenemos a Marnie Flag del Departamento de Salud.
Thank you, good evening everyone, and it's my pleasure to speak to you today. I have a lot of information regarding environmental health and our department is here to help you. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call us.
Buenas tardes, soy por parte del Departamento de Salud. Para mí es un gusto estar aquí con ustedes y la información que les voy a compartir es relacionado a la salud de ustedes y de qué manera poder reingresar de una manera segura.
Our department followed the Cal Fire with the Housing and Community Development Department and placarded the houses with a red or yellowed placard.
Nuestro departamento siguió las reglas según el Departamento de Incendios y también el Departamento de Vivienda y hemos etiquetado las viviendas dañadas con etiquetas rojas o amarillas.
Six red placards were placed in Pajaro consisting of a couple of houses, residences, and one multifamily dwelling that had four units.
En total, seis ubicaciones se colocaron con una etiqueta roja. Esto corresponde a un cuánto de casas, unas cuantas residencias y unas cuantas unidades de viviendas múltiples.
The units that were red-placarded had foundation damage and they will need to have an evaluation to buy a licensed contractor or engineer. Any necessary repairs will require a permit from the Housing and Community Development Department.
Estas unidades que fueron etiquetadas en rojo tuvieron daños en la base del hogar, en la base de la casa. Viene siendo los cimientos de la casa. Estas propiedades van a necesitar de una evaluación por parte de un contratista, un licenciado, perdón, un contratista esté confirmado como ingeniero y también puede ser que necesite reparaciones que se necesiten sacar a través del Departamento de Vivienda.
Environmental Health also placed a red placard on those homes to signify that they are not safe to enter.
A la vez, se ha colocado una etiqueta con una imagen de una casa roja lo que indica que no es seguro entrar a esa propiedad.
These structures with a red placard should be evaluated and repaired before you are allowed to enter. The public can reach out to HCD at 755-5025 with any questions or concerns.
Estas viviendas, no se recomienda que las personas entren porque es un peligro para ustedes. Se recomienda que contacten al Departamento de Vivienda y el teléfono es el 831 755 50 25 para preguntas o cualquier duda que tengan.
Environmental Health focused on what people should do to take universal precautions once entering homes with a yellow placard. We only focused on providing added documentation on the impact of the disaster to homes and businesses.
Uno de nuestros objetivos es asegurarnos que las personas cuando estén ingresando a sus viviendas si ven que tiene etiqueta amarilla, les estamos dando unas sugerencias de cómo ingresar y qué pasos llevar a cabo para cuidar su salud.
Environmental Health has also worked with the county and placed hygiene and sanitation centers within the Pajaro area.
A la vez, el Departamento de Salubridad ha colocado alrededor de la comunidad de pájaros diferentes estaciones de higiene.
Sixteen banks of toilets and hand-washing stations are available in Pajaro Park and Pajaro Middle School.
Se han colocado diferentes, alrededor de 16 estaciones de lavamanos, baños en el área del parque de pájaros y también en la escuela de secundaria de pájaros.
We have also installed showers, laundry services, and toilets and hand-washing stations.
También se han colocado regaderas portátiles, baños portátiles y lavamanos portátiles.
Bottled water, personal protective gear, hand sanitizer, and cleaning supplies will also be available during daylight hours.
Agua embotellada, cualquier equipo de protección personal para la limpieza, este desinfectante de manos y equipo de limpieza para el hogar también se estará proveyendo durante las horas de servicio.
MST, the bus service, has coordinated bus routes with 18 stops that will circle around the Pajaro area, including the stops at the hygiene areas and the resource hubs.
La compañía de camiones MST estará ofreciendo una ruta exclusiva para servir a la comunidad de pájaros y llevarlos a las diferentes ubicaciones de estos centros de limpieza.
So these showers, laundry stations, and other portable toilets throughout the Pajaro area will be available for use for all residents.
De esta manera, todos los servicios que se están trayendo a la comunidad pueden estar disponibles para todos.
It will also be important that you work safely while you clean your home. You will need to protect yourself from unknown hazards while cleaning your home and your community. We will provide you with instructions on how to do that.
El siguiente paso será cuidar de su salud cuando usted empiece a hacer la limpieza de su hogar. El Departamento de Salud le va a dar pasos a seguir de qué manera puede empezar a limpiar su hogar de una manera segura.
You will need to look at your placard and enter your homes carefully and look for obstruction hazards. Keep a supply of water and snacks and hand sanitizer along with extra gloves.
Al momento que llegue a su vivienda, paso número uno es revisar qué etiqueta tiene, qué color es la etiqueta de su vivienda. Si es una etiqueta en la que usted puede ingresar a la propiedad, se recomienda que use guantes, protección de boca y también que tenga un desinfectante a la mano, tenga siempre agua embotellada y botana cerrada.
As I mentioned, cleaning supplies and tools will be provided.
El equipo de limpieza será proveído.
The county will also be offering curbside debris removal services to the community as soon as we are possibly able to.
En cuanto sea posible, el Departamento de Salud va a dar servicio para poder eliminar y quitar todos los escombros.
This flood debris removal service will be free.
Este servicio para eliminar los escombros será al pie de la banqueta y será un servicio gratuito.
The service will only accept blood debris removal.
Este servicio únicamente aceptará cualquier tipo de escombro debido a la inundación.
It will be very important that the community follows the instructions given by those that sponsor the flood debris removal.
Es muy importante que toda la comunidad siga los pasos dados al momento de la limpieza y cómo hacer esta limpieza de los escombros.
You will not be able to use trash bags for blood debris.
No podrá usar bolsas para eliminar todos los escombros.
You will need to move vehicles that are obstructing the roadway and are blocking storm drains and fire hydrants.
Va a tener que mover cualquier vehículo que esté estorbando la entrada a un alcantarillado o a un hidrógeno de agua para los bomberos y también que no permita remover cualquier tipo de escombro desde la banqueta.
We will be sure to notify the community and give ample instructions before the cleanup begins.
Nosotros nos aseguraremos de que ustedes como comunidad de pájaros tengan toda la información necesaria antes de iniciar la limpieza.
Be sure to photograph and take pictures of your homes for your own records.
Asegúrese de tomar fotografías de cómo encuentra su propiedad al momento de entrar para sus propios records.
For anyone here that's a business owner, please be aware that you will be responsible for cleanup of your own property. But Environmental Health will be here to answer any questions and help you as well.
Para cualquier persona que esté aquí, que sea dueña de algún tipo de negocio en el área de pájaros, por favor esté al tanto que estos servicios son bajo su propia cuenta pero el Departamento de Salud estará aquí para ayudarle a dar información o pasos necesarios.
A business owner should work with a service hauler to arrange cleanup or contract a specialized service to assist them.
Los dueños de negocios serán responsables de eliminar sus propios escombros y hacer contrataciones con compañías para eliminar estos escombros.
For those areas of Pajaro that had no debris, routine service will start. You may use your black garbage containers and they will be collected.
Una vez que el área haya sido limpiada y aquellas áreas que no estén recibiendo un servicio para eliminar los escombros, podrán usar una bolsa de basura y se darán las fechas en qué días estará recogiendo.
Blue bins and green bins will not be serviced at this time.
Los contenedores azules y verdes no se proveerán en este momento.
I would also like to talk to you about your water system.
También quiero platicar sobre el sistema de agua.
The water system is not online at this time, but when it is, you will be using the backup water well.
En este momento ustedes no tendrán conexión al agua, pero una vez que se tenga conexión estarán usando el agua que se encuentra en el pozo.
Do not drink the water.
No tome de esa agua, no beba esa agua.
Only use bottled water for drinking, brushing your teeth, washing dishes, making ice, making food until further notice. Only use bottled water.
Únicamente use agua embotellada para cualquier tipo de uso personal, lavarse las manos, lavarse los dientes, lavar los platos y preparar alimentos.
You can use the water to take a shower.
Sí puede usar uso del agua para tomarse baños.
The water system will comply with all requirements from the state before the order is lifted.
El sistema de agua cumplirá con todos los requisitos para asegurarse que el agua que empiece a circular sea potable y usted se sabrá sobre esta información una vez más que esté listo.
The residents will be notified by phone or in person when all testing is complete and the do not drink order is lifted.
Una vez que se levante la orden de no beber el agua de la llave, usted será informado a través del teléfono o en persona. Una persona llegará y le informará de esta información que la orden de agua potable para no tomarse está levantada.
That's all I have for right now. And just remember, Environmental Health is in the community all the time and we will not stop helping. We will be here for the long haul. Thank you.
Eso es todo por parte del Departamento de Salud y también queremos hacerles saber que aquí vamos a estar en todo el tiempo, en todo momento para contestar cualquier pregunta que tengan sobre recursos sobre salubridad.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. All of the phone numbers that I gave are located on information sheets for you to call our planning department and Environmental Health.
Todos los teléfonos que se dieron se encuentran en las mesas de información. También ahí están los teléfonos para el Departamento de Planeación. También en la mesa de un costado tenemos todos estos papeles con información. Pueden coleccionarlos al momento de la salida o en este momento. Después de la junta, por favor.
Gracias. Now we have Randy Ishi, the Director of Public Works, Parks, and Facilities for the County of Monterey.
Ahora tenemos al director del Departamento de Parques y de servicios públicos, Randy Ishi.
Thank you and good evening. With me this evening is my assistant director, Tom Bonnega.
Yo estoy aquí junto con el director, Mónica.
Our staff are the ones who maintain the county public roads, most of the county buildings, and Monterey County parks.
Nuestro departamento se encarga de dar mantenimiento a los parques y calles dentro de la comunidad.
We are here tonight to give you an update on what we have completed and what we have planned.
El día de hoy les daremos una actualización de todo lo que estamos logrando y lo que todavía falta por lograr.
As we reported previously, our hard-working road crew and contractors have been cleaning the streets in Pajaro due to the debris that was brought in by the waters.
Como se mencionó anteriormente, ya hemos logrado limpiar todas las calles de la comunidad de pájaros de cualquier escombro que se haya dejado por parte de la lluvia.
Through the late part of last week, they worked feverishly to clean the streets and then the sidewalks. And there's a little bit of debris that still left, a little bit of mud. And there's a little bit of debris that still left, a little bit of mud on Lewis Road and some of the sidewalks. But by far, the roads are able to be driven upon and walked upon.
Durante la semana anterior se estuvo haciendo esta limpieza de calles y banquetas, hay unas zonas que todavía quedan con algo de escombros y un poco de lodo, pero por la mayor parte todas las calles y banquetas pueden ser accesibles de manera peatonal o con vehículo.
After cleaning the roads, they saw that the water had left damage in the roads. So they spent the weekend patching the potholes. And there are some that were beyond their ability, so we needed to hire a contractor to fix those, which they're doing this week.
Durante ese fin de semana se estuvo limpiando las carreteras y se estuvieron sellando cualquier tipo de pozo. Pero en algunas ocasiones se descubrió que el daño había sido tan severo que se tuvo que contratar a un equipo de personas diferentes para que pudieran venir a hacer esas reparaciones y eso es lo que se está trabajando actualmente.
Regarding the sewer system, our crew did check the sewer lines and manholes and found that they were clear.
Con respecto al sistema de drenaje y alcantillado hicieron una inspección y todo está, esté libre.
We did find, when the floodwater receded, that there was a set of damage to our sewage force main or pressurized pipeline under the Highway 1 Bridge.
Una vez que las aguas habían salido del área, se encontró que la tubería de presión que está, se encuentra bajo del puente sobre la carretera 1 estaba dañada.
Our contractor has ordered the parts and they've been working on repairing the line with a bypass force main. And they're making good progress, and we anticipate that that will be back in service well before the end of this week.
Las partes para reparar esa parte se han contratado y se espera que se termine ese proceso para finalizar esta semana.
As we all come back, if you see something on the road, please say something. So please call us at 831-755-4925.
Conforme usted regresa a su vivienda hacia el área de pájaro, si ve que algo en la comunidad, en las calles, no está de manera correcta, por favor levante la voz y comuníquelo. El teléfono al que deben de llamar es el 755-4925.
Thank you, and we are available for any questions.
Gracias y al final se contestarán cualquier tipo de preguntas.
Thank you, Randy. Next, we have from our Health Services Bureau to talk about health services available for evacuees in the shelter, Deborah Hopgood.
A continuación tenemos a Deborah Hopgood. Ella es de parte del departamento de servicios de salud y nos hablará sobre los servicios disponibles en los centros de refugio.
Good evening and thank you for your time this evening. Good evening and thank you for your time this evening. I've been working with a number of representatives from departments throughout the Health Department to make sure that we provide a safe place for those who have been impacted by the storms and flooding. We've all been working together to ensure your health and safety and make sure that you have access to healthcare needs.
Buenas tardes. Por parte del departamento de servicios de salud sociales, hemos trabajado junto con muchas organizaciones para asegurarnos que todas las personas que se encuentran en los centros de refugio pueden recibir diferentes tipos de atención y de servicios.
Many people from throughout the community came to the shelter with pre-existing medical conditions such as diabetes and high blood pressure. Additionally, there are many vulnerable residents within the shelter such as the elderly and children or infants.
Muchas de las personas que ingresaron a los centros de refugio llegaron con algún tipo de salud ahorita ya preexistente, como diabetes o alta presión. También tenemos a personas que llegaron con un estado de salud no tan estable y se les está dando servicio.
Our team has worked hard to make sure that there are healthcare providers here to provide anything from basic first aid to more complex patient management and help with management of your chronic diseases. Many of these diseases may have been made worse by living within the shelter and the stress, anxiety, sleeplessness, and other issues that can be caused by the impact of the flooding and the storms.
Nos hemos asegurado de que haya personal médico y de atención para la salud para todas las personas que se encuentran en los centros de refugio. Sabemos bien que algunas de estas personas que llegaron con una condición preexistente puede ser que esa condición haya aumentado o que si no la tenían ahora tengan una simple situación de salud diferente debido al estrés o la situación simplemente de vivir dentro de un centro de refugio.
The medical team here at the shelter is here to help you manage those problems. They can help with issues such as access, medical devices that may have needed to be left behind in the wake of the storm, as well as access to medications and other emergency medical needs and issues.
Nuestro equipo médico está aquí para ayudarlos. Les podemos dar acceso a medicamentos o acceso a algún tipo de equipo médico que tal vez en el momento de la evapación lo dejaron en su hogar y estamos listos para ayudarlos.
So the provision of medical care here at the shelter has truly been a team effort. We've been able to bring in people from throughout the community as well as throughout the state and nation to help provide for your healthcare needs.
Dar apoyo a la salud de nuestra comunidad es un proceso importante para nosotros y nos hemos asociado y afiliado con diferentes organizaciones para poder asegurarnos que reciban la salud médica.
Two very important components of that include the mobile medical vehicles that are here from Salud Para La Gente and Clinica De Salud.
Uno de esos equipos es el vehículo médico que recibimos por parte de Clínica de Salud y Salud Para La Gente.
Many of you may see these providers already out in the community, and this has allowed people to continue those existing relationships and continue the treatment from their providers that they're comfortable and familiar with.
Tal vez ustedes ya estén asociados o familiarizados con estos servicios que han estado ya en la comunidad y esto ayuda a que ustedes tengan continuidad con sus proveedores de salud y servicios médicos.
The team here to provide medical care for you consists of many physicians. We have family medical doctors, we have obstetrics and gynecologists specialists, we have nurses, EMTs, therapists, and counselors all here to support you.
Dentro de los tipos de servicios que estamos ofreciendo o que usted puede encontrar a través de estas organizaciones, son doctores familiares, doctores obstetras, terapiistas, enfermeras.
In addition to the community-based providers, there are also representatives here from the American Red Cross as well as the Calmat team who is over here to our left. While you're here in the shelter, we would encourage you to make use of these healthcare resources and visit them for any needs that you may have.
También tenemos afiliación con la Cruz Roja y con la organización. Calmat, que se encuentran aquí del lado izquierdo mío. Les aseguramos y les aconsejamos de que mientras se encuentran en el área de refugio asistan a estos centros de salud médica para recibir cualquier tipo de asistencia.
We'd also encourage you to make sure that you're keeping an eye out for each other, that you're wearing your masks, that you're washing your hands and using the hand sanitizer that's available to you.
También les queremos recordar que mientras estén dentro de estas áreas acumuladas de muchas personas, que recuerden usar su cubre boca, lavarse las manos frecuentemente y usar este, este desinfectante de manos.
Lastly, and perhaps most importantly, if you're feeling ill or someone around you is feeling ill or experiencing any symptoms, please do go see a healthcare provider so we can make sure that you get feeling better or your family member gets feeling better and to help us prevent the spread of any infections.
También queremos recordarle que si en cualquier momento usted o un familiar suyo comienza a sentirse enfermo, por favor visite una de estas actividades o sitios de cuidado de la salud para que se puedan cuidar ustedes y prevenir esta contaminación.
And thank you. It's been an honor to speak to you today.
Gracias, es un honor platicar con ustedes.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, we have Lupita Espinoza from the Monterey, the County of Monterey Department of Social Services.
A continuación tenemos a Lupita Espinoza por parte del departamento de servicios sociales.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lupita Espinoza and I'm from the County of Monterey with the Department of Social Services. Apologies. My name, like I said, is Lupita Espinoza and I come from the Social Services Department from Monterey County. We would like to let you know to everybody that we are here in this building this week until Friday for those who would like to apply for services or public services. For example, health assistance, food assistance through CalFresh, and monetary assistance. If you are interested to apply for these programs, we are here. If you cannot attend personally, you can also call us at the county number, which is 1-877-410-8823. You can call this number and you will be helped. If you already have a case open with us and you would like to report any changes, you can call us and we can make the change. Or if you have a loss of food that has already been established, like for example in CalFresh, you can also call us at this number, okay? So this is our recommendation. If you cannot come here personally, you can call us at this number or you can also apply online at thebenefitscount.com or calfresh.org. If you have any other questions, please give us a call at the number that I provided earlier. Thank you.
A continuación tenemos a representantes de Watsonville Law Center y de California Rural Legal Assistance. Next, we have representatives from Watsonville Law Center and California Rural Legal Assistance.
Good evening. My name is Adriana Melgosa and I represent the Watsonville Law Center. The Watsonville Law Center provides assistance for low-income families in Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito. We would like to let you know that there are options, legal options, if you are renting your property and you cannot return to your property. There are options or legal steps that you could take and you have rights. It is very important to remember that there are legal services available. If you are health patients or from Salud Para La Gente, you can receive legal services as they have a legal services department. So please ask them to provide you a referral for the center or for their legal services department. We would like to inform that during this event, we understand that you're going through a difficult time. Landlords and tenants are also going through this, and there are options for everybody. We also have our partners from California Rural Legal Assistance that can also provide assistance to have options or legal services. These are individual services, and every case is different and depends on your personal situation. If you were already informed by your landlord that you are going to be evicted, it is important that you get a consultation as quick as possible because you have rights and you can exercise those rights. You can do this through California Rural Legal Assistance or you can come to the Watsonville Law Center. To obtain legal services, it is very important that we want our families to be aware that without matter of immigration status, you have rights. I am very loud, so I don't need a microphone. I don't think I need one right now. As I mentioned, without looking at your immigration status, you have rights in California. In California, everybody who rents has rights, and don't be afraid to exercise those rights. We want you to get connected with legal services, and you can look at your individual situation. We are working hard with the Monterey County to bring these services and continue to bring these services to our families. One of the most important things is that if your home or your rental is not habitable, and I would like you to learn this word, habitable. You have rights not to pay rent until that property is habitable. But please have a consultation. We will be here available. We have people here with us that will be available to answer any questions you may have and to direct you to the right service. It's super important that you understand that the information is also in writing, and we will be providing flyers and brochures where it will explain the difficult, the different cases. But if you have property and you need to fix the property or also property that is not going to be able to be used again, we're also working with agencies that are working hard to get funds to provide assistance, financial assistance with your residents. Again, the message is super important. Without looking at your immigration status, you have rights, and we all have rights in California when it comes to living spaces. If you have been informed by your landlord that you will be evicted or you've received the notification or a document, it is important that you act immediately and request a consultation, a consultation to look at your rights, and thank you.
Gracias, ahora tenemos a California Rural Legal Assistance.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Katz. I am an attorney and director of the California Rural Legal Assistance Office. We have offices in Watsonville, on Carr Street, and also in Monterey. We also support San Benito County. We provide services on housing issues, public benefits, labor issues, and education cases from K to 12. We offer services for public benefits, like if you apply for Medi-Cal or any program, and you are denied and you feel that you are eligible, our office is available to investigate and to help you make an appeal. Also, if you have any difficulties with unemployment or if you're eligible, we are also waiting to get an extension for those benefits for another 60 days, given that there's a declaration of emergency. Also, we offer services as the previous speaker indicated from the Watsonville Law Center. If you receive a notice from a landlord, it's important that you investigate or you start working on that matter. Our services are free. We do not charge for those services. We want to help and we hope that all landlords act adequately and appropriately and that they offer living quarters when it's available and habitable. But if you have questions about those issues, we are available. Please reach out to our offices. Thank you.
A continuación tenemos a Ben Ruth Hauser, representante de SPCA Servicios para el Rescate de Animales. Next, we have Ben Ruth Hauser with SPCA Services and Rescue Efforts.
Good evening. SPCA Monterey County is now caring for 221 pets evacuated from Pajaro. We also rescued dozens more from flooded areas and reunited them with their families, and we are providing pet food and supplies to all local emergency shelters and to anyone who needs help.
Buenas tardes. El departamento de SPCA... El Departamento de SPCA ha ayudado a más de 221 mascotas evacuadas. Más de una docena han sido reunidos con sus dueños y ellos están providing alimento gratuito y cuidado gratuito para estos animales.
Our disaster response team continues to help pets and people in Pajaro every day. Please contact us if you need any help. We are here for you. We are a nonprofit organization and all of our services are completely free.
Nuestro equipo de desastre continúa en el área y sigue trabajando duramente y están ayudando y sirviendo. Este servicio es gratuito. Ellos son una organización no lucrativa.
If you need help evacuating a pet, getting pet food for your pets, caring for pets that are in Pajaro, we will help for free. We also have flyers available with more information.
Si usted necesita ayuda con el cuidado de alguna mascota o necesite que alguna mascota sea evacuada, por favor contacten a la Agencia de SPCA. El servicio es gratuito y tienen con ellos unos flyers con mayor información.
Thank you for trusting us with the care of your pets.
Gracias por confiar con nosotros, por la ayuda y cuidado de sus mascotas.
Please know that they are safe and we are giving them all the love and care they need until they can return home to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, and thank you, SPCA. Next, we have the Superintendent of Schools for the Pajaro Valley Unified School District, Dr. Michelle Rodriguez. She will deliver her message in Spanish.
A continuación tenemos a la Superintendente del Distrito Escolar del Valle del Pájaro, Michelle Rodriguez.
How are you doing? I would like to tell you that we are with you. The district understands that the children and the community are going through difficult times and we are here to provide support and help. We also know that the schools are not only a place to learn. It is also a place where residents can get connection and services that are very important for the children. We would like to thank all of the parents that are sending their kids to school. At this time, we have 90% of attendance to TMS, TMSA, instead of 75% that are attending Lonnie and 80% of attendance that are going to Hall District. I say thank you because we understand that there is where the children can get all of the services they need. If they cannot attend, please call the office of our schools so that we can work with you and give you a plan, an independent study plan. At this time, we are... We have a lot of community partners that are helping us. We also work at the shelter, helping you. For example, we have a group, a team, that is working here to wake up the kids in the morning and help them get ready to get on the bus to go to school. We are also providing enrichment classes. We're also providing other types of classes to provide the services. Lastly, I would like to indicate that we are also working to support the community and like you heard before, we will be having, in Pajaro Middle School, we will be having services, showers there for the community to return as soon as possible to your homes. We are always at your service and please, if you have a child that cannot make it to school, we ask you to please call the school and let us know. We are here to make sure that that child receives the instruction and the services without attending school. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us tonight. So one of our important partners in disaster recovery and disaster relief is the American Red Cross.
Uno de nuestros colaboradores importantes es la Cruz Roja.
And I'd like to invite Patsia from the American Red Cross. She'll speak to you in Spanish.
Con usted el presentado Patsy, gasta.
Good evening and it's a pleasure being here tonight with you. Pajaro has always been my heart. We have worked hard with this community, making sure that you are safe. We have been here from the beginning with, through these emergencies, that there's many agencies working with the affected community. So we have a lot of volunteers because 99% of the people here are volunteers, not just local, but from all over the United States that are here to support us. We have a person that came here from Puerto Rico to provide assistance. We will be here from the beginning and we will be back when you return to Pajaro. We are a nonprofit agency. We do not receive government funds. This is why, and why do you ask? Because we do not want the government to tell us who we can help and who we cannot. We will continue being here in Pajaro when you return and we will be there to provide you cleaning kits, provide you food for the weeks that you will be out here cleaning. We will be here, providing resources and services. Any questions you can have, I will answer them at the end of this conference. Thank you.
And before I introduce you to your District Two Supervisor, I do want to acknowledge the hard work of our District One Supervisor and his staff, Luis Alejo, our Chair of the Board of Supervisors. So thank you, Chair Alejo.
Antes de presentarles al supervisor del distrito número dos, que es un representante, quiero hacer note que también aquí se encuentra el presidente de la mesa directiva de los supervisores, el supervisor Luis Alejo, representando al distrito número uno.
Now it gives me great pleasure to introduce the District Two Supervisor for Pajaro, which is included in his district, Mr. Glenn Church.
Claro, con mucho gusto. Es un placer presentarles a su representante del distrito número dos, el supervisor Glenn Church.
That is always a problem. My name is Glenn Church and I am a Monterey County Supervisor and representing Pajaro and all of Monterey County.
Ay, me da bien de piernas. Soy estar de pulitas. Soy yo el representante Glenn Church y me es un gusto para mí representar a la comunidad de Pajaro.
It's compromise. Before I begin, I want to... I want to pass on one message from Environmental Health and that is if you live on a private well, then you should contact Environmental Health to make sure that it is safe. I do not live...
Antes de iniciar, quiero hacer mención que para mí es muy importante el cuidado de su salud. Si ustedes viven en una área donde comparten un pozo de agua, comuníquese con el Departamento de Salud para asegurarse que está el agua potable.
I lived outside Pajaro in the El Coro area and I also wanted to introduce one of my staff, Vanessa Teviedo, who lives at Las Nomas, also a close community.
Yo vivo en el área de El Coro, pero también quiero presentarles con ustedes a una persona que es parte de mi equipo, Vanessa Teviedo, y a mí en el área de Las Nomas.
I want to thank everybody who came up here and spoke. These are hard-working people who are working to help Pajaro in the evenings and on the weekends. And they are very dedicated, very committed. And they are spending a great deal of time to try to help make the safe community.
Primero que nada, quiero agradecer a todas las personas que han presentado el día de hoy. También quiero agradecer a todo el equipo del Condado y todos los trabajadores que han estado a cargo de diferentes funciones, ayudando durante el día de la semana, tardes, días y noches, para poder ayudar a la comunidad de Pajaro.
When you are able to go back into Pajaro, you will see many of these people and their staff out there to help you and they will help guide you and solve many of the problems and answer many of the questions and provide many resources that you will need.
Cuando usted regrese a su comunidad, va a ver muchas de estas personas, del personal que han estado trabajando y ellos van a estar ayudándolos en su regreso, en su regreso a la comunidad y pueden contestar cualquiera de las preguntas que usted les tengan.
Sometimes things get forgotten and confused in the... and everyone moving back and all the responsibilities that everyone has. And that is where my office is here to help. If you need resources that you're unable to find, there are problems that come up that are unexpected, we will be available to help guide that and to help through what is inevitable. There's always some bureaucratic problems that need to be sorted through.
En muchas ocasiones, después de recibir tanta información, puede suceder que queden confundidos a qué agencia tenían que haber llamado para resolver el problema o recibir un servicio. Nuestra oficina está disponible para ayudarnos y guiarlos. Si tienen problemas, dudas o no saben a dónde acudir, comuníquese con nosotros y nosotros podemos ayudarles en cualquiera de los procesos en los que se encuentran.
And finally, eventually, you will be resettled back and the many resources of Monterey County that will help you through this will move on to other things. But many of the problems in Pajaro will still remain. As we all know, it has been very neglected over the years. I and Vanessa and I know my staff are all committed to be in there for the long term. When there are problems in the future, three months, six months, a year from now, we're still being, we'll be there. You do not want to just bring Pajaro back to where it was, but to try to make it a little better. You can't promise miracles, but we will not forget.
Cuando ustedes regresen a su comunidad, estén ya todos en su vivienda duramente. El Departamento de Emergencia y los diferentes departamentos y agencias que han estado aquí ayudarnos a su regreso continuarán en otras áreas del Condado ayudando a otras comunidades. Pero nosotros, representantes del Distrito Número Dos, aquí seguiremos ayudándole a la comunidad de Pajaro porque sabemos que existen problemas actuales y que tal vez existan problemas en el vínculo. Y lo que nosotros queremos es encontrar soluciones y ayudar a que Pajaro sea una mejor comunidad.
Thank you Supervisor Church. We'll get you.
We do have the money. And that's been a long time to go on.
About what happened? They want information with their team. Okay, so... Yeah, they're saying that they didn't receive information about the flooding. They wish they had been informed.
I have been here two months on this and I hear you are like releasing better information.
Yo he estado en este reciente durante dos meses y ustedes tienen la razón. Necesitan ver más información.
I do want to...
Yeah, let me...
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Let me answer the questions or the comments that you made first. In this process, we have been requesting assistance from the state and also federal in different ways. We have requested help financially, financial assistance to put it in your hands and the community and we're also asking the community to provide assistance. Hold on a second. This is part of what we're doing. And the reason why I'm providing this information is we are trying to get this assistance from FEMA and we have not confirmed that assistance yet through the state. We have sent them the information and they have to send it to the president. That is what we're waiting for. The parts that have been approved are categories A and B. And what city is this? Okay, but it's in the city of Watsonville? Okay, so that's part of what we've been working on trying to collaborate with the city of Watsonville and the Santa Cruz County. We are available for Monterey County, but we're collaborating with Santa Cruz and Watsonville. Watsonville is a city of Santa Cruz County and we understand there have been instances in which they have been delivering food at the bridge and that has been organized through community-based organizations. Now, what we're doing now is we started to put toilets and porta-potties and hatch washing stations and also showers at the community of Pajaro in anticipation for the re-entry of the residents coming back into the community. Understanding that there's a lot of people in the community that don't have documents, this is the type of assistance that we're requesting. We need assistance for undocumented and for those who are documented. That is the request that we are submitting to the state and to the federal government. If you're Yale, I cannot hear you. That is something that was communicated to us and this was done through the city of Watsonville. So through the supervisor, we have been trying to speak to the city of Watsonville. But we know that there have been distributions of food through the food bank. But this is something that we need to discuss with the city of Watsonville. But hopefully soon enough, you will have the opportunity to go back and there will be food available and services available once that people are coming back. But we also have heard that. Yes. That is what we hear. And we are working, we're working on that. Yes. Yes, I understand. And like I said, it's through the city of Watsonville and that's... We will be having services available similar to what happened in January, but there will be near the Pajaro community in ways that there will be opportunities to receive services and there will be a place where you will have all these services. And there will be a place where you will have all these services available.
I end up over there. I don't live there. I live here.
What she's saying is that, the problem is that the community of Pajaro does not its, does not have its own zip code. And that possibly that is part of the reason why they haven't been receiving the help. So if, if she needs help, she always goes to Watsonville. The only thing I wanna say is we go to ask for help and they tell us that we're not field workers. There's a lot of people that go in person. I live in Pajaro. I have, I work at the bakery and in a store. I don't have a home, I don't have work. I go to ask for help and they don't wanna give me assistance because I'm not a field worker. One of the things that we asked when the governor came is that the help that he indicated that was available through United Way was already, was help that was already available to the community. And that is true. If you don't work on, in the fields for that assistance, you won't be able to get that assistance. We are working to get more funds, but not necessarily just for farm workers. Uh, but also to, for people that work in other areas and other sectors. I know that Monterey County received funds to recei- to fix the levee. But that project will be fixed in six, seven years. What happens next year if there's new, um, if it happens again, will Pajaro flood again? We, what's gonna happen? What, how long is it gonna take for the levee to be fixed? We're not gonna wait seven years for you to fix the levee. Yes. Also, the governor indicated that the work will last six, five to seven years. But we are currently issuing repairs to make the levee stronger. At, at this time, what is being repaired is the area where the levee breached and we will be providing more information as to what is happening in the future in terms of repairs to the levee.
I have a question. Uh, we appreciate all the efforts of Monterey County helping keep all the water homeless like now. But, uh, number one question I have, why since January, uh, when we had, uh, the levee on a brick of breach and the Monterey County officials, they knew that any time storm is going to happen. Why they didn't even, it's happening, why they didn't, uh, fix to the extent possible the levee had breached? This is number one question. Number two question is, now, uh, is the declaration of disaster being received by the federal government and, uh, California government or not here? Are we waiting for the funding? And number three, which is very important, uh, we hear, we heard here a lot of help being provided and will be provided to people who live in that area and who lost their homes. But we didn't hear anything about how the county will help small businesses in this area who are severely affected and how are there any funds to be provided uh, for the cleanup, for the repair, for the losses of the business?
Hello, Health and Safety Department, Monterey County Department of Emergency Emergency. Uh, I heard the levee, uh, gets your correct, being, uh, very close to the levee overhopping in January. Uh, I would give a little bit less than a foot to the job. Uh, prior to the January storm, uh, muscle wall was stalled on the money. Where essentially reached this storm.
Con respecto al dique y la situación en la que se encontraba delante el 2 de enero, tiene razón, el dique estuvo muy cerca de abrirse y romperse en el negro, estaba abajo de, cerca de un pie. Y en ese momento se hicieron unas reparaciones adaptadas para ayudar a darle soporte.
There was erosion after that first storm, at which point between the January and March storm, several emergency repairs were conducted to restore the levee to a previous condition prior to the pandemic.
Durante ese tiempo, la erupción que causó esas tormentas de enero, se hicieron reparaciones para llevar a cabo el dique de la manera en la que se encontraba.
The same muscle wall that was installed in January was still in place for the March storm.
El mismo proyecto que se colocó también estaba presente en la temporada de mayo.
We have requested federal assistance from, from FEMA for this community. We have submitted letters and initial damage estimates to AEW, at which point, but it's still sitting with the state and we are waiting to hear about federal assistance.
Hemos presentado nuestras cartas y solicitud de abogio federal para una declaración de emergencia. Estas cartas se han presentado a nivel estatal y federal y estamos esperando por una respuesta.
Once a federal, a federal declaration is declared, more support for individuals that follow small businesses may have a value, such as the Small Business Administration, the U.S. Emergency Protection Program for Farmers.
Una vez que una declaración de emergencia haya sido aprobada, podemos recibir más fondos y poder ayudar, mejorar la comunidad. Podemos recibir fondos para ayudar a pequeñas empresas que se dan a través del servicio de la agencia SBA y también puedes dar servicios a comunidades de agricultores.
As I indicated, we will be having, uh, local assistance centers. Those will be available for residents from Pajaro in areas where you can come. And a lot of the services you are asking for is exactly what is gonna be available there. Especially services that have been, uh, providing financial assistance, we will try to make those available. For those centers to be available when, when they are open, that this is where you'll be able to access this assistance. Of course, we understand it may not be enough, but yes, we are trying to provide this assistance to you as you have been impacted by, by the storms. And so the intent is through these community, uh, centers is where we will try to provide this assistance, um, to you.
It, it was always kinda weird.
The microphone for the unit right, right here, this one? Well, I had, I had a ribbon here for a little bit. Oh, here we go.
You got it.
It was either thirteen or seventeen.
Can you move it just a little and then test it? Yeah. You were cracking. You almost fall off the chair. I asked them to come down with us.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, you got it, make sure.
Channel thirteen, seventeen. Thirteen.
Yeah, try thirteen.
Five, thirteen.
Yeah, so...
Oh, on the, yes. Channel has to be on the back of the, this thing. Is this yours? What channel is it? Oh, okay, perfect. Right at the last minute and we can't get her.
Practice that, of course, but so there's a, you're going to be able to.
Yes, I need to take a break up for us.
Or accurately.
Figuring out, see how we can do some of.
Can I have your microphone?
Hey, what time for me on channels?
Yes.
Pero es.
Test me, escucha. Me escucha, ahora sí. Sí, me escucha ahora. Me escucha bien. Me escucha bien, se escucha. Testing one two, testing, me escucha bien, se escucha mejor. Ahora me escucha. Testing one two, testing. Se escucha río, se escucha río. Me escucha, ahora sí escucha. Aló, probando uno, dos, tres, me escucha, se escucha bien, se escucha arriba, se escucha arriba. ¿Me escucha qué? Aló.
All right. It's already 10:45. We're gonna reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting. Madam Clerk, could we call the roll, please?
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present and in person.
And next we'll go to the announcement by our Spanish interpreter, Diego Celis.
Diego Celis, seré su intérprete español inglés e inglés español para el día de hoy. Si está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio intérprete, por favor venir al podio, hablar claramente y suficientemente fuerte para que yo le escuche. Por favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Diego. Now we'll go to the pledge of allegiance. Want to ask Supervisor Wendy Reed, ask if she lead us today in the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you, Supervisor. Ask you, we'll go to additions and corrections by our clerk.
There is one, and that is for correction under item 11. Under the scheduled matters, we have received a revised ordinance.
Thank you. We'll go to ceremonial resolutions. We only have one today. This is to adopt a resolution honoring professional social work and recognizing the month of March as professional social work month. Do we have any comments from any of the board members or could we entertain a motion? We'll ask you second by Lopez. Is there any comments from the public on this resolution? See, it's on this resolution. That's not public comments yet. This is a social work resolution? Okay, I'm going to present that or I think I'm presenting it after we get a vote. All right, but we're on public comment on this item. Are you receiving the resolution? I have Eva Ortiz and Emily Nichol receiving this. Oh, yes, on this item, then you were right. Please do.
I know I seem like an official, but I'm a member of the public this time. First off, thank you very much, members of the board. We really appreciate receiving this resolution. Every March is Social Worker Month and it celebrates the values that social workers embody. That means advocating for social justice, being a believer in change and how change can move communities. One of the most important things though, and our assistant director actually reminded me of this just shortly before, is celebration. And I really appreciate the fact that we have this chance to celebrate the social workers. As all of us know here in this building, social workers have been through a lot, especially recently with the floods. We were disaster workers. We've helped with fires. We've helped with our impoverished populations. We're really the people that are making this department and this county run. And one of the most important things is to be able to celebrate those victories. And so having a resolution like this is really important because it allows us to celebrate our profession, celebrate each other and focus on being strengths based. So again, thank you very much for the resolution and I hope that we can continue celebrating social workers through not only March, but through the rest of the year.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers on the resolution? See none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those against, the motion carries five zero. I will now make the presentation. Thank you. And today joining me, I have Eva Ortiz from the Aging and Adult Services Branch and then also Emily Nichol from our Family Children's Services. And this resolution reads, adopting a resolution honoring professional social work in recognition of the month of March as Professional Social Work Month. It says March is known across the United States as National Social Work Month and the official theme for March 2023 is Social Work Breaks Barriers. Social workers work with other professions, community groups, lawmakers, civil rights offices and organizations to bring equal rights for all, including women, older adults, people with disabilities, people who are Black, Latino, Native American, LGBTQ and various cultural, ethnic and religious groups. Social workers have continued to be on the front lines during the COVID-19 pandemic and all the emergencies, disasters that arise, ensuring the safety and well-being of children, seniors, people with disabilities, providing support to community members in county shelters during the pandemic, wildfires and floods, and providing personal protective equipment to caregivers and clients. Whereas social workers make a critical impact in infant, child and adolescent development, aging and family caregiving, child and older dependent adult protection, family services, healthcare navigation, behavioral health treatment and recovery, military and veterans assistance, nonprofit management and community development. So therefore, I'm not going to read the whole resolution, but the last paragraph reads, with the Monterey County Board of Supervisors on behalf of our county and all the residents there of, hereby proclaim the month of March as Professional Social Work Month and call upon all our residents to join with the National Association of Social Workers, the NASW Monterey County Unit and the more than 700,000 social workers around the nation in celebration and support of professional social workers. So could we give them a big round of applause, everyone, for all our amazing social workers in Monterey County? And I guess I'll present that to you and we'd love to hear some words from you.
Thank you. My name is Eva Ortiz and I am the Deputy Director for Family and Children's Services. And I just want to say that, yes, March is recognized as a national appreciation for social workers and our social workers, they show up every day. They are empathetic, they're resourceful, they're solution focused, they support each other. For example, in the month of March, we received 465 calls that our social workers responded to. Our social workers partner with the families to work through the barriers that they're presented with every day and I am so thankful to be part of the team of social workers. Nada más quería decir, mi nombre es Eva Ortiz, soy la directora del Departamento de Niños y Familias. El mes de marzo es reconocido como el mes de celebración para los trabajadores sociales. Todos los trabajadores sociales cada día presentan para apoyar a las familias. Por ejemplo, en el mes de marzo recibimos 465 llamadas y nuestros trabajadores sociales respondieron a estas llamadas, trabajaron con las familias y hacen todo lo posible para presentar resoluciones que funcionen para las familias. No solamente para el Departamento de Niños y Familias, sino todos los trabajadores sociales del condado que incluyen a los trabajadores del Hospital de Natividad, los trabajadores del Departamento de Salud Mental y estamos agradecidos por todo el trabajo que ellos hacen. Additionally, I also want to say that there are other social workers in our departments such as Nativity Day Hospital, Department of Health and our Children's Behavioral Health Bureau that also have social workers that work every day.
Very much.
Hi, so my name's Emily Nichol and I work for Aging and Adult Services and I just wanted to put a little bit of a spin on this with a focus on our seniors. I actually recently went back to rural North Carolina to visit my 84-year-old father and I saw how he needed help with meal preparation, medical transportation, all kinds of things. And I said, you know what? I need a social worker. I, a social worker, need a social worker. And I reached out to the senior center and was able to connect with someone there. We are really lucky in this county because we have so many social workers. There was just one who provided this service in rural North Carolina. Here we have in Aging and Adult Services, six social workers whose specific job is often to take calls from the boards of supervisors and your staff. When we get calls from the board of supervisors, we send them to our information and referral and assistance social workers and they're really the center of our universe. They will love that I called them the center of our universe. So they refer our, those callers to many different services that we offer. One of our biggest programs is in-home supportive services. There are over 11,000 community members that are impacted by this one program alone. 6,000 of them are recipients, 5,000 of them are the caregivers themselves. They may refer callers to our Adult Protective Services team. We get over 250 calls every month just for that, just for that program. We also have the SSI advocacy program, which serves those who are applying for SSI and also may have housing needs. So just the volume of calls we're getting, I have the numbers here. Over 1,200 calls a month come into this center of the universe and then go out to other teams of social workers. We have over 50 social workers just in our program in Aging and Adult Services. I do want to acknowledge the large group of social workers that we have here who are actually from Family and Children's Services who do amazing work as well. So I just want to thank you for giving us this resolution and for allowing us to share some of the things that we do as social workers.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yes, and the board want to come down for the photo too, yeah. Thank you, social workers. Center of the universe, social workers. I'm going for the center of the photo, so.
Got a whole group here.
And we'll make, if we could get a copy to Nick Pascoli, so he can post it on our social media, please. All right, thank you, social workers, we're gonna go to our appointments, these are, this is items number three through seven. Any questions or comments on any of the appointments?
Move approval of the appointments?
There's a motion by Adams, they're second, second by Church. Any comments from the public on any of these appointments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those against, motion carries unanimously. We'll go to consent calendar, item number eight, this is items number 16 through 30. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to pull item number 26 for some questions.
Okay. Anyone else?
Item 25.1 and 30.1. For comment.
Okay. I don't see any others, so let's go to your first supervisor ask you, and we'll go by just numerical order, 25.1.
Great, thank you, so 25.1 is an increase in funding for the Emergency Operations Center, taking $2 million to support the ongoing flood mitigation operations. And I just wanna acknowledge that this is being financed by the Strategic Reserves. And the county has exhausted our discretionary sources of revenue, and we are now dipping into our strategic reserve, which I think is absolutely appropriate source of funding for this particular item. But it is indicative, I think, of the financial situation that we are finding ourselves in, where we have a very rapidly declining source of revenue to support critical county infrastructure and emergency response needs, so just needed to call that out. And then should I do 30.1?
Okay, since you're, you got the microphone, yeah.
I got the floor, all right, so we'll do 30.1, 30.1 is some additional funding for the Laguna Seca Bridge project. This is an additional, let's see here, an additional, sorry, two, we're increasing the cost of our, the bridge, the weather tech raceway at Laguna Seca, the start furnished bridge and the racetrack resurfacing project. And there were, you know, winter storm caused delays to this project. And so I think, I think my point, and I just need to pull this out and comment on it, this project has been incredibly expensive. It's been over budget now on a number of different occasions. And we are looking again at exhausting any additional funding from our cannabis assignment and our discretionary sources of funding for this project. And I do think it's important that we acknowledge the need for a long-term conversation about our plan for managing Laguna Seca in such a way that we are not continually utilizing discretionary county resources to finance this, this operation. I think we do have a great opportunity, and it is a valuable asset that the county owns, but the way in which we're currently having to utilize county general fund dollars to subsidize the cost of the racetrack is concerning and is deserving of some additional conversation. So no comments beyond that questions, but I just needed to pull both of those for those comments, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, we'll go to supervisor Adams, item number 26.
Thank you, I just found this item somewhat puzzling, and unfortunately, there was not much additional information to help me understand it a little bit more. But we are being asked to approve a resolution approving a 1.929046 million-dollar loan from the Monterey County Local Housing Trust Fund to Greenfield Commons. Or we could adopt a resolution approving $500,000 from the loan to Greenfield Commons, and a $500,000 loan to Monterey County from the local housing trust fund to Light Fighter Village. And I must admit that I don't understand why are we gonna either do a million dollars? Or are we doing 2,500,000s? And I didn't, I don't quite get why we're being asked to make this determination without having a little bit more backup information on what is, what is this all about? I don't know if there's anyone from HCD here, or from, if Darby is here, we put a call into him and did not receive a response, so I don't have any, any additional information.
Okay, let's see if there's any stuff online, yeah, Darby, thank you very much.
Morning supervisors, Darby Marshall Housing Program Manager. So I admit this is kind of confusing, we have an interesting situation that came up late in the process where back in January of 2020, the board had approved a 1.4 million dollar loan using home program income for Greenfield Commons. About a month ago, the state came in and told us that we could not use those funds to support this project because it is located within the city of Greenfield. So that left 1.4 million dollar gap in financing for the project. At the time, we were proposing two $500,000 loans, one for Greenfield Commons and one for Light Fighter Village, to establish the trust fund and make good on funding commitments that we had made during our grant application to the state last year. We're recommending the 1.9 million dollar loan to Greenfield Commons and 500,000 for Light Fighter Village. The downside to this is if the board does fund the full 1.9 million, that will reduce the amount available for us to match a state grant application that is due in May. But the staff recommendation is to do the 1.9 and 500,000 dollar loans to Greenfield Commons and Light Fighter Village. I hope that explains, answers your question supervisor?
Thank you for the words, but I still find myself a bit at a loss. If you could explain what's gonna happen then for the matching money for the grant? If we use this 1.9 million for one and the 500,000 for Light Fighter Village? How are we gonna come up with the match for that grant?
So, we have a, again, this is all moving parts. So we still will have approximately 1.4 million dollars available as match, and those are gonna come from the permanent local housing allocation. If you recall, back in November, the board applied for PLHA funding on behalf of the cities of Carmel by the Sea, Greenfield, and Solidad. That will essentially replace what we're using today to fund the 1.9, the 1.9 million dollars at Greenfield Commons. So, we still have matched dollars, we just won't have as much. And I wanted to highlight that as a policy choice for the board.
And can you tell me if we were not able to use the funding as, as projected? Because we were funding something within the city of Greenfield? What, why are we funding something within the city of Greenfield?
This is a different pot of money that does not have the same limitation. And really, we don't have a lot of affordable housing projects in the pipeline in the unincorporated areas, and so this is a way for us to support affordable housing development, regardless of whether it's in the unincorporated areas or within a city. We, we need the affordable housing, we have some financial resources, and we think that this is a very good use of those resources.
And is it the same for the Light Fighter Village project?
Yes, those will all be out of the trust fund, and we'll be tapping some of the PLHA funds for those.
And will any of these be able to count against our RENA numbers?
No, they will not, because they are, the cities will be issuing the building permits. And that's gonna be an ongoing challenge as we move forward with the sixth cycle is identifying appropriate projects for affordable housing in the unincorporated areas to meet that 3,000-plus unit goal.
Okay, I think I finally understand it. My suggestion would be in the future, if there was a bit more description behind it, I think it would have made it a little bit easier, maybe everybody else, you know, understood it, but I certainly did not have that comprehension of this at all. So thank you for explaining it.
Okay, and let's go to other comments, let's go supervisor Lopez, and then supervisor Church.
Just on this project, it's one that I've been assisting with for many years, and I know I've often stated that I'm frustrated by the fact that we don't get credit for the RENA figures, and most of that frustration came from this project. Because it is a significant amount of units, I believe 47 to 48, depending on which document you're reading here in our packet today. But there's been significant work done at the state level as well to secure, I think, 50-plus million dollars in loans to get this project moving. It is an infill project on the east side of the freeway, it's exactly what we've been preaching, and this is the follow-through, my frustration remains with that ability to share RENA when forever, since I joined this board in 2019, we've said this is the type of project we want. We said, let's use CDBG, and we were told you can't use CDBG, all right, well, let's find a source of funding to support this project because it is dense. It is right next door to a school, and it's gonna support so many families. At one point, we were even talking about a portion of these being permanent supportive units, again, full wraparound. And so this project has a lot of merits, and this is just phase one, there's future phases. But I think this is a great investment on behalf of the county to show that we're committed beyond a doubt to projects that are gonna truly put people in homes, and this is an opportunity for us to do that. But thank you for pulling the item for me, I have the lens of having been through this item so many times, both on the CDBG Urban Ad-Hoc Committee just recently, but in following it for four and a half years, I had that lens on it, so thank you for calling out that clarity issue.
Thank you, supervisor Church.
Yeah, glad to get the background on this too, because I was trying to look at this project as well, and, and piece it all together. One, because I don't have the historical experience of dealing with this, or the district experience of dealing with this, as supervisor Lopez may have. It seems like this would have been a good project, probably to have pulled out, and for a discussion with the board and not part of the consent agenda, hearing that there's two or three other phases down the line too, and knowing that the RENA numbers aren't going to be counted, knowing that, or not knowing, but wanting to get some clarification whether or not we're gonna have to have further county investment into this. It might be a good thing to really bring back for a discussion by the board, as a separate agenda item at some point.
Okay. Let's go to members of the public, would they like to comment on consent agenda, item 16 through 30.1? Nobody in chambers, nobody online? Do we have a motion? Supervisor Lopez?
Move approval of consent.
Is there a second, second supervisor ask you, all those in favor, please say aye. Any against, motion carries five zero. On consent, now we're gonna go to general public comments, item number nine on the agenda, for any items not on today's agenda, this is time for the public to speak for a couple of minutes. We have one person coming in chambers, coming forward in chambers, and then we will go to those online.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, I'm Eloise Shim. It's truly unfortunate that all of California, not just Monterey County, has discovered the plight of the levees, which are in disrepair and need dramatic attention given to them, which will cost a lot of infrastructure money. It will take a great deal of time to put them in order, and it must be done so that places like Paharo will not be a community that is in constant turmoil because the infrastructure is lacking. The people of Paharo have a right to be angry and concerned that they're being forgotten as a community. County and city officials have to stop putting off important projects that place people in danger of losing their only, not only their property, but also their lives.
Thank you, anyone else in chambers? Seeing none, we'll go to those online, oh, we got a couple. We'll give priority to Father Victor Prado of Summation Church, thank you for being here, sir.
Buenos dias. Estamos aquí presentando. ¿Dónde?
Todavía no estamos en el.
Ah, no? Okay.
Sorry.
Perdón. Okay.
Es para comentarios que no están en la agenda. Okay. John, Mr. Noriji, thank you.
Good morning. Mr. Chair and members of the board, I just want to say thank you. I'm out here to address the, the issue with the Laguna Seca overruns. I don't think anyone could predict the kind of winter that we've had, but I do believe that the board has made the right decision to move forward and get that place opened up and have two major races, so I do, I sincerely thank you for your support on this project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noriji. Any other public comments for items not on today's agenda? Now we'll go to those online.
Jasmine Root?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Jasmine Root, and no relation to our supervisor Wendy. I grew up in Paharo, and my husband grew up in Las Lomas, we are, we are lifelong North County residents. I'm, we are both also alumni of Paharo Middle School. When we went to buy our house, because we are privileged enough to have that opportunity, as many people in our community do not, I really wanted to buy a house off of San Juan Road. My husband said, absolutely not, because when the levee breaks, not if the levee breaks, when the levee breaks again, we will be flooded. And we did not buy that house. And when I drove by it yesterday, it was destroyed. So, when my community is going through yet another flood that could have been preventable, I was, it was a call to arms to me. I've donated yesterday on my first day of spring break, as I'm a teacher in the LSAL Union School District, I spent it in Paharo handing out supplies, food, and everything. I did not see one county truck, I did not see one county person. I saw people at Assumption Church, I saw private citizens, and this has been felt in Paharo. Everybody is talking about where is the county? Where are the people? The people, the things that they needed most, that they were asking me for, was water, garbage bags, and gloves. Our county should be providing that. And our county cannot continue to let the hardest working people in our county that are the most important people, because they are the ones that run our economy. Without field workers and migrant workers, it stops.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments and for your generosity in handing out donations as well. Anyone else online?
Eli?
Thank you.
Hi, yes, I would just like to amplify the last speaker. I hear and I feel her pain, as well as many of our community members in Paharo that are currently suffering at the lack of care and dismissal, and just lack of compassion as well. The way that everything has been handled, and the way that the counties, both Santa Cruz and Monterey, are hiding behind policy is extremely not surprising, it's expected. She said something, the last speaker said something very important, that it's not when the levee breaks, it's not if, it's when. I hear a lot of people saying that we couldn't foresee this happening, that this winter has been worse than before, but climate change is real, people have been talking about it my whole life. The levee broke when I was a kid, and y'all lost a huge lawsuit because it was proven that the lack of care is what leads us to these instances that y'all do not respect and take care of the Paharo residents. And it, and now it's being, this environmental racism is being seen at a larger scale. And I hope that this wakes y'all up a little bit, because that levee will continue to break. And everybody knows why it breaks on the Paharo side and not on the Watsonville side. Everybody remembers what happened in 1990, whatever, '05, and everybody's gonna remember this, and everyone's gonna remember when it happens again. So you guys have to take accountability, you have to create. So you guys have to take accountability. You have to create real policy and change. People in Paharo do not trust you. They do not, they know that you don't care for them. They are justifiably angry. And y'all are not doing enough. I know you think you're doing more than enough, but you're hiding behind policy and you really should be doing a lot more.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else?
Phone number ending in two zero six.
You have to press, what is it, star six?
Yes.
To unmute on the phone.
Phone number two zero six, you're unmuted now.
Yeah, hi.
Okay. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Rebecca LaGrange. And the reason for my call is because I've been trying to get ahold of someone that can get us information about the hazard materials that were found in Paharo. Currently, I know there's been many statements brought up with that hazard material, but I yet to see or call someone that's able to provide that information. And I'm worried about the people in Paharo that are doing all the cleaning right now without knowing what type of hazard material they're breathing, they're touching, you know. I know many people are wearing gloves and stuff, but when you, when you're seeing it even on TV, you see people that are wet and have mud all over them, you know, and it's a concern to the public that I think we should at least let them know what type of hazard material they're dealing with. And also if there's some lab analysis work that's been done, that can be provided to these people.
Thank you very much.
For listening to me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Not seen any others online, nobody else in chambers? So we'll close public comments for item not on today's agenda. And I'm gonna take little things out of order here. I'm gonna just continue on our regular agenda and jump to item number eleven. To adopt an urgency ordinance enacting a temporary prohibition on evictions related to the flood and atmospheric river weather event that began on March ninth twenty twenty-three and direct staff to work with available and appropriate legal service providers to provide legal services to persons displaced as a result of the flood and atmospheric river weather event. To present on this is our county council, Les Gerard, and I know our members of the public are waiting to speak on this item.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the board. Due to the circumstances arising because of the flooding in Paharo and elsewhere in Monterey County, it is appropriate, in my opinion, for the county to adopt an urgency ordinance setting in place a moratorium on evictions from either residential or commercial properties, including mobile home parks. The ordinance in front of you is modeled after the COVID-nineteen eviction moratorium. It does not relieve a tenant from the obligation to pay rent. But the tenant must document to the landlord that they are unable to work, have income, or do business in such a manner that it impacts their ability to pay rent. The ordinance is drafted, would be effective through June thirtieth, unless extended or earlier terminated. I do not recommend going beyond June thirtieth. I know there's been some communications wanting it extended until the end of the calendar year. But my recommendation is to keep it until June thirtieth and then reassess conditions in June or earlier, and you can always extend it as may be appropriate. But based on the evidence and the record, I recommend that we stay with the June thirtieth date. There is also one other change that has been requested, and if I could share my screen. You'll see in subsection B that's on the screen, originally, the tenant was supposed to notify the landlord prior to the rent being, the date on which the rent is due, or within a reasonable period of time not to exceed seven days thereafter, that the tenant needs to delay all or some of the payment. It's been requested that that be modified to fifteen days, and so that is in front of you. So the ordinance in front of you will be modified to reflect the fifteen days. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up for questions and comments from the board. As a maker of this referral, I just wanted to comment, and I want to thank our county council for moving very quickly to get it on the agenda. But the community of Paharo did open up last Tuesday at ten o'clock, and families returned to their homes and business owners returned to their businesses, seeing a lot of damage, a lot of, everything that touched that water and mud is damaged. And if you drive, if you drive to Paharo, now you will see the piles of people's valuable assets that are now out there as debris to be picked up. So there's tremendous loss, and many of the homes are not habitable. And, and it is causing housing instability for many of the families in Paharo. And we need, we needed this protection in light of the dire circumstances in that community. So I'm glad this came forward very quickly, and I want to acknowledge the nonprofits in Watsonville, Erica Padilla, and other nonprofits who requested this to come forward to provide that protection for this community. This was a request from the community, wanting to protect their neighbors. And I'm glad that many of the nonprofit partners and community leaders are here to support this effort, and I hope that in June, sometime when we consider an extension, because I think we will need it. But as our county council rightly pointed out, we need to make those findings at the right time then, but hoping that we might add that additional time if the circumstances warrant it when we make that assessment in June. So I want to pass this over to my other colleagues to make some comments. Go to supervisor Church.
Thank you, and thank you, county council, for making that, that change into fifteen days. My concern is that that this is the twenty-eighth. A lot of people's rents are due on the first, that we're gonna have a hard time getting notification out. I know one particular case where the landlord told told the renters when they came in from evacuation on the day they arrived, that they were gonna have to have their rent due on four-one. So I think one of our big challenges is getting this word out. If we do adopt this, which I believe there's going to be support on the board to do so. I also want to when we get to the motion part here is to add in to have county council research whether or not we, we can at later date adopt perhaps a blanket haul to evictions within the flood evacuation areas or the areas that were flooded, I should say. I know that might take a little bit of research, but there is a step, there are a few steps to have to go through in here for people who are seeking a, an exemption onto this on evictions and as Chair Laheal pointed out, these people have just lost everything. There's a great deal of distress in their account, encountering problems that none of us up here can truly, really imagine at this point. And I want to just give them as much flexibility and, and room to to get on with their lives and feel protected as possible.
Thank you. I'll go to supervisor Lopez.
Happy to wait till after public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other comments before public comments?
Thank, thank you. Just it's hard to fathom the losses that people are experiencing and the trauma that's toppled on top of trauma on top from these storms and the evacuations and the, the loss of homes. I think this is one of the, the things that this board can do to, to take action, to support our residents as we get people back into their homes and help them rebuild. I just want to also acknowledge that this is, this is just one, one of many small things that needs to happen on behalf of the county so that we can support people. And I in no way intend for this to be the only thing that we're doing. I think there's a lot more that needs to, needs to be done, but I just want to express my support and to everyone who's impacted. We continue to work to find every action and option that we can to support you and to help you rebuild your lives and your community.
Thank you. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much. I also am supportive of this action to prevent people, the renters specifically who've been displaced and economically impacted by the flooding from the storm events. It's clear that this has got to be an urgency. I mean, this is, I think supervisor Church's comment about rent due April one is very apt. I'm just curious, if a tenant were to be evicted, who is going to prevent them from being evicted? Is it county staff? Who would process these types of claims? Or would the, like, local legal services, such as the Watsonville Law Center, process them? And if that, in fact, is what we're thinking, I want to be sure we've confirmed with Watsonville Law Center that they have the capacity to take this on. And then I wanted to know if there are any other community groups who are even local lawyers who would offer pro bono work available to assist with this. So I think what I'm saying is that I don't want this just to be words on a piece of paper. I want to know how we're going to do it so that the person who was told he has to have the rent on April one, and it's not there, is not going to be booted out. Who's going to be there to protect that person?
We'll let county council, and he also wanted to add something just to, as part of his presentation.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair, supervisors. The ordinance will be a defense to an eviction action by the landlord. And eviction is a long, can be a long drawn-out process. So part of the action or part of the recommendation today is actually to direct staff to work with legal services providers, perhaps the Watsonville Law Center and others to help provide the necessary services to the tenants to understand their rights and to assist them. So that was part of the recommendation in the staff report. But it's the, it involves a private right of action, and it will be a defense to the tenant against any eviction action brought by the landlord.
And just to add to that, supervisor Adams, I know Phyllis Katz is here from California Rural Legal Assistance. They've been collaborating with other legal service providers, like Legal Services for Seniors, the Watsonville Law Center. So they're, they're working on some materials to help educate the public on their rights, including if this moratorium were to pass today. So I appreciate the collaboration and the effort to try to educate the community on their rights. But part of this is also trying to work out some agreement with the county and these legal services providers, because if, if they do face eviction papers, they need assistance in how to fill those out properly and to be able to include the defense, as county council pointed out, that there is a moratorium that protects them from an eviction process. The evictions do move quickly when it's a failure to pay rent, because unlike having to give a thirty or sixty-day notice in other types of evictions, you get, in a eviction for failure to pay rent, they only have to give you a three-day notice. And after the three-day notice, the landlord could then go file eviction papers and serve the tenants. So that, that type, on that basis, it moves much more rapidly than other types of evictions. So certainly, the community education component, the legal services component, is going to be critical to help Paharo residents who might not be familiar with where to get the forms and how to fill them out. I think that that's certainly going to be a need that goes along with this eviction moratorium.
I think it also, the, it's going to be critical that we are reaching out to the landlords themselves so that they understand exactly what the circumstance is, and therefore, you know, they don't waste their time in attempting to do this. Has there been some effort? Do you know, Mr. Council, if they've been, there's been some effort to reach the landowners?
I'm not aware of any, but I'm sure your CAO can work with the Public Information Officer to try to get the word out. The trick is identifying who those owners, landlords are, and where they live. A lot of them may not live in Monterey County, much less California. So I think the CAO will work with Mr. Pesculey and his team to try to get the word out. One other thing, if I might, this applies countywide, not just to Paharo. And there may have been tenants who experienced trouble in, for example, San Ardo, Chular up the Aurora Seco that may have similar problems. So this applies countywide.
Great. Yes, and I would just, I'll go to the CEO and then I'll make my comment. Please.
In addition to us watching this closely and have, through our PAO sending information out to the community, there's, the legislators are also watching this and waiting for this action to be approved by your board. They've also reached out to the Attorney General's Office and getting some guidance, having some meetings in advance of this potential approval, so that they're also prepared to inform the public on there. And so some of the messaging is going to come down at the state level and then, of course, through our PAO.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and, and I would just recognize that the California Apartment Association did put out some information during the evacuation, saying that if there's a government-ordered evacuation, that that renders all those homes uninhabitable and that they could not be charging rent for that time. So there's been some effort by some landlord associations to educate landlords about what is permitted under the law outside of this moratorium. Seen no, seen no other comments? We'll now go to the members of the public. We'll start with those in chambers, and we'll allow two minutes. And thank you for joining us today. Yes, please, please do. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joy Flynn, and I am a Santa Cruz County resident. I'm here today to advocate for the dignity of the citizens of Paharo who deserve better. I stand in solidarity with many area residents, like those we heard from earlier. Many community leaders and agencies, such as Community Action Board, Santa Cruz County Black Coalition for Justice and Racial Equity, now known as Santa Cruz Black, Community Bridges, Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Cruz, and Black Health Matters Initiative, to name a few. This is only a start, and I ask that you, in this moment, unanimously acknowledge the dignity of the people of Paharo and vote to adopt this ordinance. And I encourage you, if you've not already been down to Santa, to Paharo, that you do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next person, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the invitation to attend today. My name is Phyllis Katz. I'm a directing attorney at California Rural Legal Assistance. California Rural Legal Assistance has provided free legal assistance in Monterey County for over fifty years. And I have been an attorney providing legal services to to tenants for over thirty years. I'm here to ask for your support of the emergent, of the urgency ordinance to place a temporary moratorium on evictions. I'd like to discuss the timeline for evictions in a little more detail. When a tenant is behind in the rent, there's a three-day notice to pay rent or quit. If the, if the money is not tendered in full within those three days, the landlord does not need to accept it. When the landlord goes to court to file an eviction case, there's a five-day summons. If the tenant does not provide an adequate response to the court within five days, five business days, then the, a default judgment can be taken against that tenant. And there can be, and the sheriff can come out, post the property with an eviction notice and return in five days to lock that tenant out of the premises. If the tenant does provide an adequate response to the court, the landlord can request a setting for trial within twenty days. These are highly expedited procedures. For the, this is only a temporary moratorium. I do hope it goes long enough. It is only for residents who can show that their income was reduced due to the flooding of the Paharo or Salinas rivers. The tenants, I appreciate the extension of time. I was concerned about the seven-day time to, for tenants to provide the written-in for documentation to their landlords. This, this ordinance might allow tenant family income to stabilize after the income, after the flooding, and enable families to pay their full rent prior to June thirtieth of this year. However, it may only delay the evictions until June thirtieth. If the families are not able to acquire sufficient rent to pay all of the back rent and that current month's rent for the month of July. Because this does not in any way forgive rent, and in fact, it does, unlike the COVID ordinance, it does require a fair amount of documentation by the tenants, a lot of documentation by the tenants. Not only initial communication, but also subsequent documentation with respect to the loss of income.
Your time is up.
I'm sorry. May I have another moment?
I, I give you in here like another minute already.
Okay, thank you. I, I, while, while I think this is it is, this it is this one more critical item is that it is critical that tenants understand that they that they must respond to the court papers and to all papers they receive from their landlord or from a process server. If they believe that this is going that this ordinance is going to in itself halt an eviction, they are woefully mistaken and they will be evicted. They must raise this as a defense. Thank you. Appreciate the extra time. I apologize.
Next person, please.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Claudia Reyes, líder de Copa y Mujeres en Acción y soy una trabajadora comunitaria. Nosotros apoyamos que se apruebe que se apruebe el mandato contra el desalojo. Yo fui una de las personas que pude ir a apoyar a las familias indígenas de la comunidad mixteca.
I'm asking the board that if you could please support this ordinance, I'm also supporting the indigenous communities of Paharo.
En el albergue de Watsonville.
In the homeless shelter in Watsonville.
La mayoría de son trabajadores del campo, familias de bajos ingresos.
Majority of them are farm workers, low income families.
Me compartían sus preocupaciones con la falta de trabajo. Me decían que usualmente regresan a trabajar en enero o febrero.
They share with me their worries about the lack of work because they usually come back to work around January and February.
Pero por las inundaciones no hay trabajo y están muy preocupados por la renta. ¿Qué va a pasar con estas familias?
Due to the floodings, there's no work and they're very worried about the rent. What is going to happen to these families?
Si no tienen trabajo y no tienen un sueldo para cubrir su renta, muchas de las familias de Pájaro están en la misma situación.
What's going to happen to these families in Pájaro that have no income? A lot of the families in Pájaro are under the same situation.
En el en el albergue habían bebés, recién nacidos niños con necesidades especiales.
In the shelter, there were babies and there were kids with special needs as well.
Por eso esperamos que se apruebe este mandato contra el desalojo. Muchas gracias.
These are the reasons that we're hoping that this ordinance gets approved as well as the eviction. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Father Victor Prado, thank you for joining us.
Buenos dias, me adelanté. Mi nombre es el Padre Victor Prado, pastor de la iglesia de la Asunción.
Good morning. My name is Father Victor Prado. I'm the priest at the Assumption Church.
A miembro de Copa.
I'm also a member of Copa.
Nosotros estamos de acuerdo que el condado apruebe la orden de desalojo para los afectados de la comunidad de Pájaro.
We are in agreement that the supervisors approve the eviction ordinance that's going to protect the residents of Pájaro.
También somos testigos del trauma ocasionado por la inundación.
We're also witnesses of the trauma caused by the flooding.
Y ahora necesitamos la ayuda de ustedes.
Now we need your help.
Necesitamos iniciar con el proceso de limpieza y desinfectación del área inundada.
We need to begin with the cleaning process and disinfectation of the flooded areas.
Primera pregunta, ¿cuál es el apoyo inmediato para rehabilitar las casas de los residentes del Pájaro?
My first question then is, what is the
Inmediato?
A way, uh, work from the county to rehabilitate the homes that were flooded.
A corto plazo, ¿qué acciones se van a tomar para poder activar la economía?
What short-term measures are you going to take to activate the economy?
De los apoyos recibidos, ¿cómo se van a distribuir para que las personas afectadas lo reciban?
Of the needed help that's located, how is it going to be distributed to the richest people that are really in need?
Solicitamos una audiencia para desarrollar el proceso de restauración en coordinación con Copa.
We request an artist to establish the coordination along with Copa.
Esperamos también activar esta ordenanza y ponernos a trabajar.
We hope to activate the ordinance and begin working together.
Muchos problemas que se han originado en la comunidad de Pájaro es por la falta de acción.
Many problems that are taking place in the Pájaro community is the lack of action.
He estado trabajando en la comunidad por 12 años.
I've been working in the community for 12 years.
Y he visto la inactividad o inacción de parte de las autoridades.
And I have seen the activity or the lack of action in part from the authorities.
Cuando empezó las ordenanzas, la evacuación o pidieron a la gente la evacuación, no había explicación. Solamente sacaban a la gente sin dar la oportunidad de que pudiese descartar cosas.
When the evacuation order took place, people weren't given the opportunity to even gather their things.
Y cuando preguntaba, yo al menos pregunté varias veces al sheriff sobre el, ¿por qué pararon la circulación en el Pájaro?
I asked the sheriff many times, why did you stop circulation around Pájaro?
In Watsonville estuvieron alertando, pero la comunidad siguió trabajando.
In Watsonville, the community was alerted, but the community kept on working.
Y en Pájaro cerraron.
But in Pájaro, they closed it.
Como si fuéramos presos.
As if we were captives, prisoners.
Yeah, necesitamos que haya más apertura, que el sheriff haga, notifique con tiempo los procesos que va a hacer y también que pongan acciones para limpiar el río.
We need more openings. We need the sheriff to be more open about his schedules and we also need the river to be worked on.
Porque es ese problema que ha ocasionado que el río se inunda.
Because that is the source of the problem that the river floods.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father Prado, for your comments.
Good morning, Chambers. My name is Mayra Bernabe and I'm an organizer with Copa. Copa is an organization of 27 deuce member institutions that is faith-based nonprofits, synagogues, unions across the Santa Cruz and Monterey County. One of which is Assumption Church, as you heard, and Mujeres who just went before me. We are in strong support of the board adopting the eviction moratorium and to appropriate legal services to persons displaced during the floods. As you just heard from Claudia from Mujeres en Acción and Father Victor, we have heard firsthand the distress, the grief and the frustration our Pájaro community is facing during these times. Last week, when we visited the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds, we talked to about 100 community members. Five different families shared that they were already facing eviction more evictions orders. One of the reasons was that the landlords want to remodel. And so we appreciate what was mentioned about if this is going to be passed as we expect that then there needs to be immediate outreach so that they know that there's their rights and also what is going to be the process. Today, we were expecting a few others from Pájaro, but they couldn't become because they are not only cleaning but also saving and salvaging some of their clothing because of the evictions. Again, Copa is committed to continue to organize, to hear from the community and ensure that they have the support they need in the wake of the disaster. Our Pájaro community deserves respect, dignity and swift response. In the coming days, Copa wants to meet and be in communication with the board on what we're hearing and what priorities they need now. For today, we're here to support the passage of the ordinance, which is only a minor step in this recovery. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Good morning, Members of the Board of Supervisors. Cesar Lara with the Labor Council along with Milpa were two organizations that have are have been on the ground in Pájaro trying to help the community there. This this is an important step to protect the residents of Pájaro since the high percentage of them are renters. But it's also an important step for all of Monterey County. As you know, the damage by these floods go beyond the immediate and acute damage of Pájaro, but across the whole county. Agricultural fields have been flooded. It will take months to recover and grow new crops. And so many of the workers save during the nine month, 10 month season and try and survive the winter. The winter usually is over around this time. It is not for many workers and so they will face unemployment longer than normal. Monterey County per capita has the highest percentage of undocumented individuals more than any county in California. I think it's Ventura and us, depends on the year. So this step is important for Pájaro. This is a step important for all the county of Monterey. But like our partners at California Rural Legal Assistance said, this is just a tool that could be picked up and used, but it has to be used and it isn't just pocket it out. Hopefully, there's enough education with landlords that that they will just avoid it and not do some of these terrible actions that they shouldn't be doing at this point. This is a test run. Not all of this lands on your footstep. There is responsibility at the state and federal level that needs to be brought up and honed in. And and I ask that we work as a community to figure this out. We've been trying to work with the nonprofits in Watsonville, working with the nonprofits here to figure this out. But there's going to be a lot of pain and there's a lot of work that still needs to happen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Lara. Next person, please.
Buenos dias. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Mi nombre es Maricela Ramírez.
Thank you for having the opportunity to be here. My name is Maricela Ramírez.
Estoy con la organización Centro Binacional y también vengo para hablar sobre mi comunidad que es Mixteca.
Yeah, I'm here to represent my organization, Binational Center.
Lo que quería decir es que estamos apoyando a que no se cobre la renta.
What I'm here to say is that rents will not won't be charged, will not be charged.
A las personas que sufrieron con las inundaciones, yo también tuve la oportunidad de estar en Pájaro.
To the people that suffered the flooding, I had the opportunity to be in Pájaro.
Y no me acuerdo qué día fue, pero fuimos y lo que pasó es que yo nosotros estábamos bueno, fuimos a apoyar al condado cuando abrieron como las lavanderías y los algunos recursos que estaban dando.
I can't quite remember exactly what day it was, but we went to Pájaro to support the county when they were giving the permission to open the laundry mats.
Y estábamos tratando de hacer como una transmisión de para comunicar a las personas que fueron afectadas con la tormenta.
We're trying to launch a communication to reach people that were affected by the storms.
Pero nos dijeron que como que no nos querían dar ese permiso de transmitir porque ellos dijeron que todavía no daban la orden, pero ya estaban ahí entonces.
We were told that we would not be given the permit to permission to transmit because the orders have not been finalized.
Entonces algo que sí nos dieron permiso al final, pero muchas personas en mi comunidad que es Mixteca no estaba enterada de esa orden.
At the end of the day, the order was given, but my community, the Mixteca community, did not get the information.
Entonces yo vengo a apoyar a que no se cobren las la renta y tampoco también porque sé como sabemos también nosotros que mucha de nuestra comunidad está trabajando en el campo.
So I'm here to support that rent will not be charged and also to let you know that many members of our community are field workers.
Y también muchas compañías fueron inundadas y la fuente de ingresos de nuestra comunidad Mixteca se basa en eso, en el trabajo del campo.
Many companies were flooded and our Mixteca community counts on this work at the field work level.
Y como mencionó el señor Cesar Lara, pues eso afecta a todo el condado de Monterrey. A todo el condado de Monterrey y yo vengo a pedir que prioricen a la comunidad indígena también.
As Mr. Cesar Lara mentioned, this is affecting most of the county of Monterey, especially the Mixteca community, which I'm here to support.
Y estamos, confiamos en ustedes que van a apoyar en eso también. Muchas gracias.
We trust that you will support this as well.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Let's go to other speakers in chambers. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Maria Rocha and I'm a Copa leader from Assumption Church in Pájaro. I'm here to support the eviction proposal that you're doing today. But I'm also here to ask you to work together. We live in the more expensive county in California. Monterey is very expensive. And a lot of the people that are being affected, they're agricultural workers, like it was said before. We depend on these people to bring the food to our table, which means it will affect everybody, right? We're going to have to pay for the groceries, the food that comes to our table. And a lot of these workers will probably won't have a job either for because of the flood. So again, you know, you're here because you care about the community. You all are representing a different part of Monterey County. But I also feel that you have the interest and the power to make our community better. Not and it's sad to say, but when I go to Monterey, the roads look clean. If something happens, a resident calls, that's taken care of. If I'm in Pájaro and there's things happening, I might call, nothing gets done. So we need to have equity and because we all pay our taxes. Even if I'm over there by the bridge, I still pay property taxes and it's based on how much my property costs. So I do appreciate your support and we look forward to working with you so that we can make our county and our community safe so that we can continue to be in this country and to keep making a difference for the people that are around us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Anyone else in chambers want to speak? Otherwise, we're going to those online. Okay, we'll go to the first person online.
Reggie Messler.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. I am actually a resident of Santa Cruz County, but I advocate a lot for renters and people living in vehicles and tents. And I just want to applaud the Monterey County Board of Supervisors for bringing forth an eviction moratorium. But I would like to offer some ideas about how you can approve the efficacy of this. As one of the previous speakers stated, evictions are eventually enforced by the sheriff. And if you simply tell the sheriff not to do that and to actually, when they receive calls from landlords, to tell the landlords that about the moratorium, I think that would go a long way. I think the idea that folks should have to pay rent during this time is a little absurd. No one else is going to rent these properties in their current state. And the tenants are clearly taking on a huge labor and monetary burden for dealing with these damaged properties. So if anything, they should probably be paid by their landlords during this time. And I think the burden of proof should be on the landlord for an eviction right now, not the tenant. Beyond that, I think this the county and the city, the most they can do to be very helpful is things just not acting, right? Don't do vehicle abatement right now. Don't do camp sweeps. You know, don't have the sheriff kick people out of their homes. Like, support and resources are absolutely great and I think people do need them. And I think what the city and county can do is not enforce a lot of these very sort of brutal capitalistic property laws that they're used to enforcing because that's the situation we're in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the next person online.
Yes, Maria Elena de la Garza.
Good morning. Buenos dias. I am Maria Elena de la Garza and I'm the Executive Director to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County. We exist to eliminate poverty and create social change and I'm very appreciative of Chair Alejo's proposal for an eviction moratorium. We support this work. We have been out there since day one, since the initial press conference where it was our staff who helped support the Mixteco translations in at the press conference on day one. Our team has been in partnership with Monterey County, providing interpretation and translation services at the shelter. And we have heard directly from the Pájaro residents at the shelter who are fearful of losing their housing. They're worried about how they're going to pay their rent with having the stressors to clean and repopulate their homes. They're worried about remodeling and losing their units. And they're also worried about because of their immigration status being threatened to um being threatened uh to to either pay their rent or be reported to ICE or Homeland Security. And so on behalf of the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County and a triage of nonprofit community-based organizations that exist with many subcommittees, including a Tenant Right Tenant Landlord Rights Subcommittee. Um, we urge you and I want to thank you in advance because there's no way that your board will not support an eviction moratorium. So thank you, Chair Chairman Alejo, Alejo, and thank you supervisors.
Thank you very much.
David Graham Squire.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so I want to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak, uh for just bringing this resolution to a vote uh and for the support that's already been expressed by the board. Uh, my name is Dave Graham Squire and I'm here as a neighbor from Santa Cruz County, uh a union activist of CWA Local 9119. And I'm here in support of the eviction moratorium and to urge um that it be uh held until the end of the year. Um, I am not here to speak to the many reasons why this resolution is so needed, um to the trauma of the levee failure and evacuations, uh to the environmental hazards this has caused, to the decades of neglect uh to the water systems, and also just to the the flat-out racism that we've seen um and the disparity uh with regards to sort of which parts of the Monterey Bay have had access to resources uh to you know to recover from the flooding these last few months. Um, but I am here um to ask each of you as supervisors to really to do your part um, you know, on this resolution um by voting yes and considering that this is a moratorium that may be needed for many, many months beyond June 30th. Um, this is, of course, just one step that's needed. Um, it's and it's not just on the county of Monterey. Uh, the residents of Pajaro deserve the full support of federal and state funding uh to recover from the levee breach. Um, but right now at this meeting, um I'm asking you to do your part to again not only vote yes uh but to extend the moratorium to the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Bernie Gomez.
Yeah, Buenos dias, uh Chair and Board. Uh, you know, um, I think you've heard enough of how important this moratorium is, but what what I want to say is like this is a culmination of decades of uh disinvestment in the in the town of Pajaro, right, in North County. Uh, it's a failure um of just of support, right, of of uh honest, you know, representation. Uh, Pajaro, Pajaro has not had representation, right? At any time that Pajaro gets any type of uh um notice, right, is when it's a flood or there's something drastic going on, right? And it's always a reactive and just a response uh action. Uh, so now really just really urge the board to uh start thinking about Pajaro's infrastructure. You know, a lot of residents in Pajaro, we, you know, in Watsonville, they're considered basically Watsonville, right? But based on lines and all that stuff. Uh, so this goes, you know, just this goes to the supervisor that's in charge of Pajaro, you know? Uh, North County, you know, is maybe uh it's time to do something different that this board hasn't really uh done, you know, and it's just start really start thinking about, yes, the levee, right? Um, working with, you know, the uh the state, you know, uh, you know, Newsom, right, stated that he was gonna, he's giving money for the levee and all that stuff, tried to expedite all that stuff, right? Uh, but also pushing on the governor to be in constant contact with the uh with the president, right, to to order this uh FEMA, right? Uh, there's a rumor saying that FEMA, the threshold to to enact FEMA response, right, might not be uh held, you know, so just there's a lot of things here, you know, so just really thinking about infrastructure there and uh, you know, and just, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Next person.
Reagan Brashear.
Hi, uh, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name's Reagan Brashear and I'm a resident of Santa Cruz County and a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice. And I'm here to urge you to enact the proposed eviction moratorium for the residents of Pajaro and encourage you to extend the proposed timeline from June 30th to the end of the year. While no action the board can undo, by the board can undo the devastation felt by the community of Pajaro nor undo the decades of neglect. However, the board can take immediate action to address hardships of the residents of Pajaro. The underlying root of the crisis is one of structural racism exacerbated by the impacts of climate change. While action is needed at all levels, including at the federal and state level, Monterey County can do its part to keep the residents housed while the local economy recovers from the impacts of flooding. I just ask you to imagine having lost everything that it it will take a lot longer than three months to to recover that and uh really urge you to extend the moratorium to at least to the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Raymond Cancino.
Thank you for your time and opportunity. Um, Board, my name is Raymond Cancino, CEO, Community Bridges. Um, wanted to thank you for putting this on the agenda today. Um, obviously, the opportunity uh to help and support our neighbors and um everyone here is incredibly uh close to my heart. Uh, I am a resident of Royal Oaks as well and so um know the the devastation and pain that many people um have gone through uh firsthand. So um we are indefinitely in support of uh this rent moratorium, but policy changes and um legal actions like this are not enough. Um, we need additional support and investment from Monterey County in terms of legal aid, in terms of um housing education and tenant education, as well as landlord education and support. We have to understand that, um as everyone mentioned before me, is that FEMA and state uh government assistance and financial assistance has not arrived. And we know that there is huge devastation up and down uh Pajaro, as well as other parts of Monterey County, in which uh financial resources are going to be very, very um uh short to come by and maybe um long-term uh to come into the community. Uh, so we need some investment. We need you to go into your rainy day funds. We need you to do what is right uh to invest in the infrastructure that's needed to help support both landlords and tenants uh go through this process until we figure out um how uh not only federal agencies, state agencies, but also insurance companies are going to be pitting in to rebuild our community. So again, I applaud you um in in showing support uh for this rent moratorium. Uh, but again, that's not enough uh for us to stop evictions, to stop uh shady landlords from still um, you know, trying to undermine the law. We need education and constant vigilance uh from uh legal aid groups and nonprofit groups around this community. So we urge you to ask uh, you know, the the staff to actually find the resources and financial support uh for partners that are on the ground um helping uh to do this work already.
Thank you, Mr. Cancino. We appreciate all what Community Bridges is doing to help the residents of Pajaro. Anyone else?
Adriana M.
Hello, supervisors. Uh, my name is Adriana Melgosa and I'm the Familias Colmas Director at Ventures. Together with the community, we're working towards a shared and prosperous economic future, where SIP code, race, gender, or immigration status do not dictate income or wealth, and we are in support of this. Um, like many have said, this is just one step to recovery. Adventures, we're looking for ways to support long-term recovery because this is just an eviction protection, but at this point, um residents will still have to pay rent. Uh, we will love to reach out and and we will, we will reach out to each one of you and me with you to talk more about our work and long-term recovery plans. Um, also, I want to thank Supervisor Adams for bringing up um how legal aid will be supported by the county to be able to provide services to our communities. I worked for legal aid for more than 12 years and particularly the Watsonville Law Center. And uh legal aid will need your support to be able to serve our community and protect our community during these difficult times. So we hope that you can also discuss how you will be supporting all the legal aid offices and nonprofits who have been supporting the community during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jesús Estrada.
Uh, buen, buenas tardes. Me escuchan?
Sí.
Bueno, mi nombre es Jesús Estrada. Soy este trabajador comunitario con CCA o CCA.
My name is Jesús Estrada. I'm a community worker with CCA.
Y también quería hacer un comentario acerca de eso. Ah, es muy importante proteger los inquilinos de desalojo.
It's very important to prevent the renters from eviction.
La lluvia nos afectó a todos, todos los que trabajan en el campo y las inundaciones que sucedió en Pajaro.
The rain and the flooding has affected all of us that work in agriculture, especially in Pajaro.
La lluvia afectó a todos los trabajadores que trabajan en el campo porque ahorita la mayoría no están trabajando y eso puede afectar a dónde van a agarrar dinero para su renta.
The rain affected many of the farmworkers because right now there's no work available and that's gonna affect them getting the money for rent.
Por eso es muy importante cómo proteger a los inquilinos de la renta.
That is the main important reason to protect the renters on uh becoming with the rent.
Porque hay dueños que son propietarios de muchos edificios, apartamentos, no todavía no tiene ese espíritu de humina, humanidad.
Because many of the landlords are on many buildings for rent and some of them don't quite have that humanity spirit.
Por eso es muy importante cómo proteger los inquilinos y es todo y muchísimas gracias.
And that's why it's very important to uh help uh and support the renters and that's the reason why. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Next person.
Karina Moreno.
Hello. Hi, buenos dias. Um, my name is Karina Moreno and I'm a community member. And I'm asking that you support this memorandum, but also strategically share this so that our neighbors in Pajaro understand their rights and so that landlords aren't able to take advantage of them in in this moment of disaster. Because what our neighbors in Pajaro have gone through already in terms of loss and stress has been overwhelming. And this could literally prevent homelessness, which is important as we know that homelessness is a crisis and that it's becoming a criminal criminal offense locally. Um, and I mean, I wanna, I wanna thank the staff who spoke earlier and said that this won't be the only thing that the county should do to provide ongoing aid. Because I hope that this is just the start of what you guys are looking into and in terms of like applying for resources to help people recover the things that they lost. Um, and and some of their rent, right? Because a lot of them aren't going to be able to pay back some of their rent. As it's been shared, many of them are low-income families and not all of them are going to be able to go back to work soon to be able to recover enough money to even cover what they've lost already and their bills. Um, but this is a start and I think that this is the least of what I think you can do because as it, as it has been mentioned también, that this is a part of the community that has been disinvested in and the effects of climate change are here and we are seeing what we already know that it's affecting the under-resourced and underserved communities first and hardest. And this was honestly preventable. Um, so I hope that you do support this as a first step and continue to do more by extending this, finding more resources and prioritizing this community's investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
Eli.
Hi, hello. I am here speaking as a community member from Watsonville. Um, I ask that you prepare and prioritize assistance to provide aid with the documentation, transparency, and education surrounding this process. It is no question that this needs to be extended until December. We as community members already know that harvest is behind. We already know farmworkers are out of work and have been for a while and will be for the foreseeable future. So this is not enough time for this amount of loss. I would like to know what resources you are providing for people so that they can have money and agency to recover? And what other officials are you demanding action from for Pajaro? Like, it was said before as well, this is a time to be compassionate. Do not call the sheriff. Do not further displace people. Do do not do sweeps. Um, we as community members have been on the ground and connecting with our community with our limited capacity and the message we hear the most is of immense gratitude because they feel completely abandoned by the county. It is unfortunate y'all can avoid accountability so easily. It was reported that Glenn Church, who represents Pajaro, could be seen leaving through a back door as bewildered residents surrounded public officials to ask any updates. It's also been shared that Luis Alejo, who's from Watsonville, is blocking community members on social media. People will remember your actions. They will not care about your photo ops. And people are hurt, people are abandoned, rightfully so angry. And the very least that you can do is be accountable for your lack of care, for your lack of action, and apologize. I think that the people in Pajaro deserve a huge genuine apology for the way that they have been dismissed and have been treated and how y'all praise each other for the little that you do when you have the power so much more.
Thank you for your comments. Next person, please.
Keisha Browder.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Good afternoon.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, good morning, everyone, or good afternoon, everyone. My name is Keisha Browder, CEO of United Way of Santa Cruz County. Uh, we stand in partnership with United Way of Monterey County as we all work to create a quality of life that can be enjoyed by all. Um, we do thank you for bringing this eviction moratorium to the forefront. And and as my community partners have all said before me, we just cannot imagine you not voting for this as this is a the right thing to do, it's the humane thing to do, and it is a start. Um, as others have said before, there's going to take uh the next step of the financial support to get, number one, where are our neighbors gonna go? In the meantime, and so we need that financial support to make sure that our neighbors in Pajaro are housed safely. Um, understanding that this moratorium does need to expand past June, knowing that people are going to be out of work, they're not going to miraculously come up with months of months of of rent by the time June comes around. So I appreciate you at least knowing that you're going to have to review that to extend it. And again, that financial support to help with awareness for our neighbors to have a place to go for education. Um, and leaning into community partners who are here, who are here to help, but we also need the support, the financial support from uh the county to help make this happen. So again, thank you for this this wonderful start and know that this race is not finished. This is a marathon. And so I encourage you to keep going beyond this, to take care of and make right and make whole the wonderful residents of Pajaro. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next person.
Kalen Figueroa.
Hey, buenos dias. My name is Kalen Figueroa. I'm a Monterey County resident and our residents deserve so much more and this would be a good start to help and protect our community because the majority of the families affected already live check to check and they cannot afford to get the remaining things and move. So we ask you that you pass and support this moratorium so our community can at least have one less worry on their shoulders and just feel también supported, which is gracias.
Thank you. Next person.
A Ranza. A Ranza, you're unmuted now. I'm gonna go to, they just keep.
We could go to the next person who come back.
Ricardo Diaz.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm Ricardo Diaz, uh Governor and Board Member of uh North Monterey County Unified School District and in Mossland, Castro and and all North County. Um, what I wanted to ask, uh what nobody has brought up or asked if is landlords are responsible for costs of damages of a natural disaster and if renters that are cleaning up and um will be reimbursed. Also, if um big agriculture landowners would ever help the workers that have no work or that need rental assistance, that would be a big help. I'm not sure if they would want to. Um, and I wanted to to raise that Supervisor Church of North County is four months into his first term and is proactive about the area where he fails from in North County, um Royal Oaks, um, which is, you know, neighbors to Pajaro. He did, he did not leave the Pajaro town hall, but discussed topics outside with attendees in Spanish with his translator. And Supervisor Alejo has blocked me also and. And Supervisor Lejo has blocked me also on three world platforms. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Mayra Melindres.
Hi, I'm Mayra Melindres. I'm a resident of Royal Oaks community. And as a resident of this affected area, I'm really expressing my support for this moratorium and I really appreciate this moving forward. However, we know that many people will have a lot of unmet needs beyond this deadline of the moratorium. We know residents lost their belongings, their vehicles, and it will be a long recovery, especially residents that were also working in this area. I'm also the program director of the Family Resource Collective of Community Bridges. My colleagues have responded since day one at the fairgrounds and also responded to those that were staying out of the shelters. My team has heard story after story of the losses. It's devastating and also disheartening. We've also heard stories of residents already coming into our centers and saying landlords are already demanding rental payment. We have an eviction defense collaborative and we ensure those that are coming to our sites are being educated about their rights. And also moving forward would be ideal that the county provide the resources needed for the amount of needs that the community has and will have moving forward. This community has also felt forgotten and I think now would be the time to show the support for the community. And again, thank you for bringing the moratorium forward. It's definitely the first step.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Pam Sexton.
Hi, my name is Pam Sexton and I am a resident of Royal Oaks. I drive through Pajaro every day to get to my work at the Watsonville Adult School. I'm also a volunteer with Regeneracion, Pajaro Valley Climate Action, and Showing Up for Racial Justice Surge. And I'm here to voice my strong support for a moratorium. And I want to to really ask you to to add to the time. Now, I'm sorry, I I had class until noon, so I missed some of the discussion. I'm jumping in here straight from my class, but I I, yeah, I think that the moratorium needs to be longer because I know from many of my students are are in the Pajaro community, have been evicted. And this is not two months, three months is not going to be enough for them to get on their feet and be able to pay and make up the their earnings that they've lost to be able to pay rent. I also wanna support what I heard others say that there need to be other supports. We're gonna need these are families that have been victims of of long-time, long-term historic structural racism. And and we need to start changing how we invest our funds so that we can really support support the most vulnerable in our community. So thank you for for having this eviction moratorium on the table. I assume everyone will vote for it, yes, but do more. We need to do more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maria Perez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah. So my name is Maria and I work with Regeneracion, Pajaro Valley Climate Action. And I also wanna voice my support for this moratorium. But also I want you to keep in mind how a lot of, like, you know, even this meeting is not accessible for a lot of the community and just making sure whatever was discussed in this meeting and what this moratorium means can can be heard by the residents and, you know, like the language that they need to hear it and you know, because there needs to be information about what this moratorium will do and what it will not do. So I just encourage you to please, like, keep doing the outreach to make sure that those that need to hear this information can can know everything about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person.
Aranza. They unmuted themselves.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Nita Hurtal.
Hola, me escuchan?
No, there she is. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Aranza. Soy trabajadora comunitaria de centro.
Hello, my name is Aranza. I'm a community worker.
Bueno, yo tuve contacto personal con la con la comunidad misteca en especial.
I had personal contact especially with the Mistec community.
Okay, la mayor preocupación de la gente es que ellos no tienen trabajo y no tienen ingreso.
The main concern of the people right now is that there's a lack of work and a lack of income.
Ah, y no tienen como pagar su renta y esa es la mayor preocupación de ellos. Y otra preocupación es que ellos no tienen tanta información de lo que pueden hacer y lo que no.
There's two main worries to them. One is the lack of money to pay rent and the lack of information that's being provided to them.
Okay, ah, y por esa razón estamos aquí para que apoyen a las personas porque ellos, o sea, ellos están en especial trabajan en agricultura y mucho de eso se inmuntó.
And that's the reason we're here, to ask support for the people because most of them work in agriculture and the agricultural lands are under flooding.
Por esa razón estamos aquí para decirle que, por favor, apoyen a las personas de la comunidad misteca y a las personas afectadas en la comunidad de Pajaro. Gracias.
For that reason, we're here for you to support people in the Mistec community as well as the overall community and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Next person.
Nita Hurtal.
Good morning. Um, I just wanna thank you for putting forth this moratorium. I wanna echo everyone else's comments that I really urge you to extend it to the end of the year. I live in Santa Cruz County and we have watched devastation from fires and floods and watched people being displaced. And things move so slowly that the three months are gonna be gone in a zip. We're not even gonna be able to get their breaths. People have been traumatized. And these folks who work in the fields during the pandemic were considered essential workers and we need to pay close attention to them and their needs in their hour of need because not only have they lost their homes and then they're going back to homes that have been devastated, but they're dealing with toxic water, toxic waste, losing all of their possessions, just the trauma of dealing with being in a flood, which is huge. So I really want you to go beyond this eviction moratorium and really advocate for people in your North County who have been really marginalized and neglected for all these years. And I didn't even know much about Pajaro and got educated just by reading a brief article by Sandy Lyden about the intense historic racism that goes way back to when the county lines were drawn, when California became a state. So it's eye-opening for me and we all need to come to the table now and help people out. So thank you and do what you know is right.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
That was the last one, but Sheriff Nieto has her hand up.
We're leaving that till the end of public comments. Sheriff Nieto wanted to make some comments.
Hello, Board Supervisors, and thank you. I just wanted to tell you that I I support this moratorium on rental on renters because it has been difficult. It's been difficult for everybody in the county, for the people that are listening, the people that are in the audience. There are 2.2 million undocumented people in our country and 1 in 10 of those are are workers, of our workers are undocumented. The one thing I can tell you as a sheriff, when you have large unhoused populations, which if people start getting evicted, it's gonna cause that, can lead to an uptick in crime and, but more importantly, into victimization of those vulnerable populations. So so I just wanna say that I support it. I have been listening to some of the comments though, so I just wanna help try to educate some of the listeners and people in the audience that the Board Supervisors cannot just tell the sheriff not to do the sheriff's job. It's not written that way, but when you put things like this into place, then it helps me not to be able to do things that seem unhumane or seem unfair. But it is my job to follow the rules when there are rules in place. The other thing is that there, I also heard the rumors about the Board Supervisors and county people not helping with FEMA or that we're hiding numbers or whatever. I can't tell you, again, people listening, that FEMA has certain roles and we do have to make certain things. And I also heard about resources, that it seems like the resources are going elsewhere. I can tell you at least from the sheriff's office that we poured more resources into dealing with the issues in Pajaro since this event started than anywhere else in the county. However, I can't speak to what was done in the past and I know there's some trauma and there's things that have happened in the past that we as a county are trying to make right. And I just wanted to thank the supervisors for putting this on the agenda and I wanna thank all the other county department heads for all the work that they've done because we are in recovery and this is a long haul. So thank you. Oh, one more thing, Supervisor, because I also heard this also, when people were talking about compassion, the sheriff's office doesn't do sweeps and we don't go out and do extra enforcement when we have vulnerable populations. So thank you.
Thank you for that clarification and thanks for expressing your support for this moratorium. I wanna go to our CEO if she wants to make any comments at this time or just in response to some of the public comments, maybe.
There's additional follow-ups and on behalf of the departments that we all work with and that are very much engaged in the process of recovery. We already have them out. They're gonna be available through our local assistance center that we're setting up in advance of hearing back from the state or from the federal government. We already are working on setting up to do a soft launch and then have it in place by tomorrow. So you, our social media would likely be sharing that information along with our media partners that we're gonna get resources out into the community. And the location is being confirmed. I believe it's gonna be the Veterans Hall. So that'll be operational. In addition to that, we do have a contact from the state that'll have individuals there as well, which is the California Department of Social Services. Our partners with the Office of Emergency Services have been with us, but then other resources that would potentially be available, including our housing and community development folks. So we do continue to assess what we would need and so the soft launch is really just to see and make sure that we're able to have people respond to the local assistance center. So going forward, we do plan to continue to work with our different departments to ensure that we are addressing the needs of our community and that there's other resources that we can support. We're certainly gonna look into that as well.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to ask a question from Phyllis Katz. First, I know you ran out of time, but I wanted you to explain to the board some of the materials you're working on, bilingual materials that I think you've been working on collaboration with legal services and when might that be ready to distribute?
Thank you. I was hoping that they would be ready to distribute today, by today at the latest. I have put together some materials that both summarize the ordinance, at least the way in the version I had it before. It's gonna require a couple tweaks and also I'm working, I've been working on a letter to that tenants can use to provide to their landlords in order to comply with the now 15-day requirement that they comply, that they communicate with their landlords. I wonder, Mr. Gerard, if maybe I could share this with you and make sure that that this meets the intentions you have for what the tenants need to provide.
Yeah, I'd be happy to review it.
But that, okay, that would be nice to have another set of eyes on it. Who's so familiar with the ordinance? So, I mean, I I think that I think that it is a complex ordinance and so with this letter, I have I have used the language of the ordinance in an effort to make sure that the letter states the needs as opposed to simplifying the language, which I've attempted to do in the outreach materials that I've created.
Hey, hey, we appreciate that that effort is wanna make sure the board knew that those, that you were working on those and that they're coming and hopefully as soon as they're available, we could help distribute and put those out there for the community.
We have a robust language justice program at CRLA and I asked that the materials be expedited in their translation and I was and I was hoping it would be today. I heard later yesterday it would be a couple days, so I'm I'm, we'll certainly get that out as just as quickly as possible if any. Not only do things get translated, they get reviewed by somebody else who's with experience. But of course, if anybody sees something on any of our materials that you think needs further edification, I look forward to making sure everything's accurate.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. Thank you. So with that, I wanted to bring this back to the board. I wanted to make a motion for approval, but I wanted to ask county council on the date that is currently as written would be till the end of June. If we perhaps at least extend that to the end of August and then have a review then to potentially extend it even further.
I would be okay with that, Chair Lejo, through the end of August and then review the situation as the summer proceeds.
Thank you. So I'd make that.
Second that motion. I do have a question or two when you are down with your comments.
Yes, so I would just include that and also maybe along with the direction on the follow-up on the legal aid services to have our county also make sure we extend a copy of this to the presiding judge and the CEO of the Monterey County Superior Court just so that our judges are aware that this moratorium is gonna be approved today as a defense to eviction. And just by way of comment, I want to just, first of all, thank all our community organizations and our nonprofits and our neighbors from Santa Cruz County, who many who have been very concerned, very generous in their support, their volunteerism, their donations. I also wanna make sure that this ordinance, it also covers commercial property, so small businesses. They're protected under this ordinance as well and also the mobile home parks because we do have at least a couple there in Pajaro and we know that even though they own their mobile homes, they're also subject to the rent on their space there as well.
Yes, Jared, it applies to all residential, including mobile homes, as well as commercial.
Thank you. And I did want just to tell the community, this is, it's been two weeks now and four days since the levees broke. And we have, I wanna express to the community, we have been working very diligently in trying to get the governor to send that major disaster declaration to the president because that is what will deploy FEMA workers and FEMA assistants to the ground. Even if we're opening this local assistance center at the Veterans Hall very soon, it will be missing that major type of assistance that residents who have been impacted by the floods will be seeking. And so we've been almost knocking on the doors of the governor and Cal OES almost every day. They say they're getting closer but just couldn't give us a guarantee when that may be transmitted. But we are working and we are circling in with our federal and state legislators and trying to urge that Cal OES transmit that application as soon as possible so that it could be signed quickly by President Biden and then we could have FEMA on the ground. Walking in Pajaro yesterday, from the residents, from the small businesses, they all expressed that it needs to be done as soon as possible and that aid is needed immediately. I also wanted to tell the community that ever since the flooding began, we reached out to the governor's office directly and our legislators ask and our state assembly speaker and the Senate President Pro Tem asking for aid for undocumented Pajaro residents that will not qualify for FEMA, even if they were on the ground. And we know that some of those residents are gonna be in that category of being ineligible and that is where the state of California with its funds could provide that assistance. And we also know that beyond Pajaro, the bigger impacted blood victims are those agricultural workers who are also out of work and have the inability to pay their rent and put food on the tables and provide for their families. And there needs to be assistance for those families as well. Our county with our limited budget is is will be approving a rent assistance program that we talked about last week's meeting. I think it's coming on the fourth for final approval. But we're trying to do our part and set the example that even with our limited funds, we are creating a rent assistance program to help those agricultural workers who are not eligible for unemployment insurance. The last thing I would wanna mention is that the cleanups started yesterday. There's staff informers, there's four crews continuing that work, but we know that there's so much debris. Debris that was once people's prized possessions, but now being discarded because of blood and water and mud damage. But that work is gonna be ongoing until we clean up all of that in the entire community. But I know that's, community residents wanna see that done as soon as possible because they wanna get get through this recovery as quickly as they can. So with that, I wanna, I don't have any more public comments. Did you have, want? Very quickly, Phyllis, I'm gonna bring this to my colleagues.
I just wanted to say that there's.
If you could speak in the mic, please.
I just wanted to say that there's a lot of misunderstanding as to what people. I just wanted to say that there's a lot of misunderstanding as to what people can get in terms of public benefits. There is good literature available as to what people can get. And if FEMA were to come and be available, then children and those, uh, those children's citizens could apply. And there's, uh, potentially assistance that could then assist the family in that manner. So it's very important that families get accurate information as to what they can do as opposed to being concerned about immigration status and.
Exactly. Right. Thank you for making that clarification. That's why we want our FEMA workers in that local assistance center so they could explain the eligibility if they're a mixed immigration status household. Um, uh, but that's certainly something that's being requested by many families. It is a big concern. So with that, I'm going to go to Supervisor Church and then I'll go to my rest of my colleagues.
Uh, thank you. I, uh, have a question again for county council. Uh, Phyllis Katz mentioned that if someone doesn't pay their rent in three days, they can be, basically the process for eviction can begin. Does this 15-day notification that we put inside here basically extend that to 15 days?
No, it does not. That's a provision in state law governed by the, um, state code that supersedes this ordinance.
Okay, so. Thing to hear. All right. Well, my, my concern is, is trying to, to make this as strong as possible without as, with as few holes to it as possible. And I, I look at these areas that the, that have been flooded, wherever they're Pajaro or somewhere else. And, and we know that these folks have been severely disrupted, so I would like to see if the, the chair would take as a friendly amendment to, to this, um, uh, to the motion that would direct the county council to look into whether we can put a blanket halt on evictions in the flooded evacuation areas within this county?
I, I'll let county council, because I don't think, uh, local ordinance could supersede what's in state law in terms of the eviction process?
I, I'm not sure what you're inquiring about Supervisor, because the, the eviction, it, it, there's a process for, um, evictions in state law. We have the police power to put a moratorium on the evictions, but I don't think we can stop the process. Um, we just can prohibit the actual eviction. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
What I, what I guess I'm, I'm asking is, here's, I'm trying to find a way so that the notification process for a lot of these folks, um, uh, which for some of them might be onerous or they don't get the word out. I'm just trying to find a way to avoid that so they can be protected within areas where we know there's been damage.
I'll research it, but I don't believe that we by ordinance can override the three-day notice that's in state law.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I, I agree with that as a former landlord tenant, a CRLA lawyer myself. Let's go to Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, I just, I'm going to support this today and I want to be clear that this is an attempt to legislate empathy, which is unfortunate, but it's what we have to do in the scenario that we find ourselves in and commit to the community. I've, I've been on both sides of what happens when you do and you don't get that federal designation. And true lie, a few years ago, it was devastating to see the impact of that flooding on the homes. And we never even got the consideration. We never got that document sent off to the federal side. And it was painful, painful to stand there and have to say, well, we're on our own. Let's do this together. Um, and so we're hoping that's not the case here. We will not stop advocating until we get a clear answer on behalf of the community, because that's what they deserve. And I know that there's a lot of challenges ahead of us. I just want to continue to repeat what I heard Phyllis share, which is that it's important that folks understand that this does not wipe out your obligation, right? Much like the COVID piece. I heard somebody during public comment insinuate that perhaps this was going to stop payments. And I don't want anyone to take that as the understanding of walking away here. It's important to know that that obligation remains. And my big question is, my big favor that I'm asking everybody in the community and beyond our borders to do is pray. Pray for our communities because it isn't going to, the fact that there's no work is going to continue to impact our region for the rest of this year, if not into parts of next year. And it's going to be extremely difficult in the long run to, uh, really get through unscathed. And I don't know that that's possible. We're going to feel these impacts. But we have to look out for one another. And to me, that's what this particular ordinance is attempting to do is legislate the empathy necessary in these critical situations. And so for that reason, I'll be supporting this today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lopez, we'll go on this way. Supervisor, ask you.
Yeah, I just, I, I think I can echo the, the, the commitment that, that I hear from my colleagues to be here to do everything in our power to support our neighbors, um, as we try to, um, deal with what is, has been described to me by a number of people as a humanitarian crisis. Um, with individuals who, uh, who have, uh, who have so little to begin with, who are now, um, facing, um, like I said in my earlier comments, just significant traumas. Um, so I intend to support, uh, today's, um, today's ordinance, um, and today's action. Um, I intend to continue, I'm working, uh, with, uh, with our county staff, with our, with this board, with, um, the friends and neighbors and loved ones that I have in our community, uh, to listen um, and to take action, um, and anyway, every way, in any way possible that we can, uh, to support one another. You know, I think, I think there's a lot of, uh, I, I'm in, I'm in touch with Supervisor Church's staff regularly and, and Supervisor Church. And I, I know that there are so many county.